All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of February 27th, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please find, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the City Council will be as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of the organization or group they are representing, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of this individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, and group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to this item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
For today's agenda, City Council meeting Monday, February 27, 2023, our first item of business is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Is there anyone present to speak on any of these items in Sections 1 or Sections 2? Please come forward. Sections 1 and 2 on the consent agenda. Seeing none, please, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
We can vote on these items. Item 1A is appointing Tom Beckias to the Public Building Commission for a term to expire on August 1st, 2025, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Suarez.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckias.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1B, distribution of idle funds for the month ending December 31st, 2022, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Suarez. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Beckias.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Items 2A was introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckias. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckias.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2. We'll now move on to Section 4, our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling Item 4A and 4B together. Application of Taita LLC doing business as Aika Sanramen and Izakaya for a Class C liquor license located at 2820 Pine Lake Road, Suite 1, and the related manager application of Jose C. Dionazio.
Is there anyone present to testify on Items 4A and 4B? Liquor resolutions for A and 4B? Anyone present? All right. Seeing none, let's move on. Madam Clerk?
We'll be calling Item 4C, application of McKinney's Pub LLC doing business as McKinney's Irish Pub for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 60 feet by 120 feet on P Street between 7th and 8th Streets on March 17th and 18th between 1:00 p.m. and 11:55 p.m.
Welcome back. Hi.
Thank you. Back before the council requesting approval for St. Patrick's Day event again, really nothing has changed from the last few years, doing the tent, shutting down the street in front of McKinney's, oh, I'm sorry, 140 North 8th Street, Lake of Nebraska, McKinney's Irish Pub, just here in case anyone has any questions.
And I may have missed it, but could you state your name? We all know you for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joel Shasso.
Thanks, Joel.
Sorry.
You're good. Any questions?
No questions.
All right. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to testify on this item? Item 4C. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, let's, I would recognize Councilman Shoeb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're very kind. Seeing no one else coming forward to testify on these three items, I'd like to move approval of Items 4A, 4B, and 4C.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckias.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We'll move on to Section 5, public hearing resolutions. I'll be calling Item 5A, miscellaneous 22014, application of MAK Development for reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act and Section 1.28 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow up to 12 unrelated persons to reside together as a family on property generally located at 2648 Washington Street.
My name is Ryan Watson. I represent the applicant, MAK Development. My address is 2120 South 72nd Street. And just to reflect accurately in the report, I'm no longer with that current firm. I'm now with the firm of Gross Welch Marx Claire at that address. I wanted to address this short, rather simply, I think, in my capacity in representing MAK Development, this is not our first application before you. We've done this with two other properties as well. And my understanding is that this city, this council, has taken up this application similarly from other groups as well, commonly referred to as maybe an Oxford House and some other situational living. The question before you is generally the same now as it was then before. Are we entitled to a reasonable accommodation to the definition of family as it applies for the zoning code? And that family requirement requires that no more than three or more unrelated persons may live together unless they're related by blood. What we're asking for is an accommodation up to 12 unrelated persons to reside under the same roof. Essentially, what we're asking for is that people who may not be related by blood come together as a family, and that this restriction, the blood requirement, not prevent them from doing so. So there was, in kind of a different context to the prior approvals that we've received for this similar programming, we noted that there was a fair bit of resistance from the neighborhood at the Planning Commission meeting. They represented a great deal of concerns to them, but ultimately, and I don't know if any of you have really reviewed those materials thoroughly or not, but if you get the chance to do so, you really have to do so and ask yourself, are these problems that we're observing any different because these members are not related by blood? That's what this boils down to. That's the accommodation that's being requested. And so if we look at this, is the, is this the sole requirement? Are these complaints that we're receiving, do they justify a denial of our request for a reasonable accommodation? And if any of those complaints can occur by blood-related persons as well, then I don't think that makes a fair basis for the denial of our request for a reasonable accommodation. So the laws that requires, allows us the opportunity to come and make this request for you. And what I would urge you to do is depend largely on the staff report here and the legal requirements. If you look at specifically page 6 in the decision, the staff report does a good job of summarizing the legal framework and the decision and its legal focus as it's before you. And if you go into the last page, the conclusion is quite simple, where it says unless the city can demonstrate an undue financial or administrative burden or a fundamental alteration of the zoning code resulting from this accommodation request, the request should be approved. Now, also noted in the staff report, there was a reference from the Lincoln, from the Lincoln Police Department in regards to whether there was any concerning activities going on at this address. They noted that there were five calls to that address. No further specific information. And it's important to know that a call does not necessarily mean that there was anything nefarious going on. A call could simply occur because a neighbor was misunderstanding a situation. But notably in there is that they noted that there was nothing of significant concern as a result of any of those calls. Okay? So if there was something of a significant concern as a result of those calls, or if the police department thought maybe there was an extraordinary number of calls, then I think you can, then I think you may be able to justify an administrative or undue financial burden on the city. But that doesn't exist. That's nowhere in there. Now, it's clear in the staff report as well that this makes no fundamental alterations to the zoning code. And so if we have no undue financial burden on the city, and we have no undue administrative burden on the city, and we have no fundamental alteration of the zoning code, regardless of the cacophony of complaints that you may hear, this reasonable accommodation should be granted. Now, going forward, there's also, without being so black and white as far as the law is concerned, there's also a very important reason why this reasonable accommodation should be granted, is so that people, our clients, can enjoy the near south neighborhood just like anybody else. They shouldn't be excluded from that simply because they're unrelated. It's, ultimately, I think the question was posed to me from the Planning Commission, and I'm sure it's summarized in there, that where would they go if their request for accommodation was not granted? And that's the problem. We don't know. They would have nowhere else to go. These people come from broken families. They don't have a supportive, blood-related family of their own, so they seek out a family of, from the community. They seek out a family that's not related by blood, but that's related by past, generally addictions for the most part. And what I think's important, and I think the City Council really understands, it's not trying to exclude these members of the community or offer them any less of a chance than anybody else. That's what we're trying to do for them as well. So as you hear, I'm sure there's going to be some response and some concerns that will be addressed by neighbors, that, keep in mind, is it any different because they're unrelated by blood? That, I conclude. And we'd ask you to grant a reasonable accommodation, unless you have any further questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, Councilman Bowers.
Thanks so much for coming out. I just had a couple of quick questions. How many of these Michael Houses are there in Lincoln?
In Lincoln, I believe, this would be the third one that we're requesting approval for.
That you're requesting approval for, but how many do, does the owner of the operation have in the city?
I would, I would defer to Mr. Carrato whether there are any others that are in development, that I'm unaware of at the moment.
Are there more than three that are currently in operation?
In Lincoln, not that I'm aware of, but again, I would defer that question to him.
How long has this one that we're talking about today been in operation for?
I believe the, I believe it currently started seeking occupancy around July or August.
When, when was the last time that we had this conversation in front of council before?
I believe the last approval that we received on a prior property was, sorry, I believe it was just around the end of July, early August.
Were you aware that the city had been working on requirements for this type, these type of facilities in Lincoln?
We became aware of that after the plan, after the most recent Planning Commission for this application alone. And my understanding was that someone had reached out to Mr. Carrato to, to seek his input on that, but I haven't followed up with that.
Because, you know, I was very, very, very sympathetic to the Oxford Houses, the Michael Houses that came up the first time around. And when I look at number four under decisions, it says, whether alternative accommodations would be suitable based on the circumstances of this particular case. And I'm very, very sensitive to the definition of family. And to me, what it almost kind of comes off as is that we had a process that went through for some of the other facilities, came in front of the City Council, no precedent that had been set before, so then, you know, we knew that this was not exactly up to city code to operate these kind of facilities. And instead of coming forward earlier, it kind of seems like it was waiting until someone caught that the city code was being broken.
Well.
You get what I'm saying?
I do. And I understand that there's kind of been this concerning issue of what could, should there have been more proactive approach to it. But unfortunately, kind of the way the, the law rests is that in order, in the event that our application is denied, and we have to seek, we seek to go the route of making a federal case out of it, we need the facts established as to how it was operating. It cannot simply operate on hypotheticals. So that is, and ultimately, if you, if you look at that, what we're saying is that we believe that this provision, as it applies, is discriminatory under the FHA.
So I guess, again, since I was very, very sympathetic the first time around, why not come forward earlier and say, we have these houses that, or this house in particular, and say, we would like to get this approved, or we would like to get, get in line with code, or to fix the code? Because it's not, it's not untypical for a situation to come up front of council, the code shouldn't be what it is for our city, and then folks work with the city council to fix that code. And it kind of seems like we're setting up a system where we're setting folks up to break the law, break code, in order to find approval as opposed to fixing the code. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I don't know that there's any way that the city could codify its way out of that problem, because that problem is ultimately created, I think, through the, the federal jurisprudence that has established the method in which these actions need to be brought. If we don't do that first, we risk having a case with absolutely no evidence. And ultimately, that is our backstop. It's, it's the FHA that creates the authority for us to do this. It's the ADA that creates the authority to do this. So, sorry, as an attorney, I can never recommend my clients to scuttle what may be their ultimate relief in the hopes that you get some administrative cooperation along the way, because time and again, that's proven to not necessarily be effective.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, just to kind of finish, I think that has to, that problem needs to be addressed in more of a political sphere than I think through, through applicants kind of working with the city in a proactive approach. There's nothing wrong with that, but I don't think that that's something that they can rely on going, going forward without, without risking their operations in the first place.
It just kind of feels like a little bit of trust has been broken, if I'm being honest. I think those are all the comments and statements today. I thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bowers. Councilwoman Suarez.
Yeah, I'm new to the council, and so I have just a few background information or questions, I guess. On page 3 of the report summary, the stated mission says to provide a structured program to allow you to succeed in sobriety, allowing you to be more financially independent, self-sufficient, and excel in your next phase of life. That was the stated mission to the residents of this program. So I'd like to know, what is the structured programming that is provided? Could you describe that? And again, because perhaps this has been rehashed, or hashed, or just discussed, but since I'm new, I really would like you to slow down a bit for me and tell me more about the programming that's provided, the structured programming.
Sure. And just to make sure that I know that we're on the same spot, did you, page 3 of the summary report?
3, where it says facts, laws, and analysis. It is the first, first spot there.
Oh, I see. In the last.
I'm very interested in the structured programming provided.
Well, so the structured programming, it's more of, and ultimately, I would, I would caution this, because I'd want to defer to either Mr. Carrato or some of his staff that actually run that directly. They're going to know the structured programming better. But I think just to give you a real bird's eye view, what we're talking about is, is an arrangement amongst members of the House and, and the supervisors of the House to provide those things that someone needs to move along with their life and to move along with their development. And that can create a little bit of, we've had to be very careful in the sense that we don't offer therapy, but we'll offer rides to therapy. We don't offer therapeutic services, but we'll offer you as many referrals as we are aware of. And we continue to keep ourselves invested in what those opportunities are for the benefit of our clients. So as far as the programming goes, I think it's important to make a distinction that there's no kind of therapeutic programming or, or medical programming in that regard. The programming is more giving kind of a holistic idea that you can come in, you can walk right out of prison, and you can come right up to our doors. You don't have to worry about getting sheets. You don't have to worry about getting toiletries. You don't have to spend the only funds that you have in your pocket in trying to make that gamble of which supplies do I need today? You can walk right in and have a safe spot to focus on your recovery. And that, I think, is kind of the general idea of where the programming is geared towards.
Okay. And then on page 7, it says applicant asserts that the accommodation is financially and therapeutically necessary. So it goes, gets back to the therapeutically necessary part of it, which I don't feel like I am quite understanding. And again, I'm just trying to understand what the situation.
And that's fair. And sometimes when you've kind of made these presentations, it can, you can kind of gloss over the same parts that you've repeated over and over. But what we found is that there is a therapeutic necessity in having multiple members of the sober community come together to work on their sobriety together. It creates a system of accountability amongst one another, and it creates, so you have two facets to it. You have one, you have the system of accountability for one another. You have, that's part of the family connection there. You have a lot of people that are coming kind of from similar backgrounds, working to move forward in their life together. But then at the same time, you also have the financial need of pooling resources to be able to get that accommodated.
Thank you. And I guess another question I have is, there is a house manager, is that correct?
That is correct.
And is, is there somebody currently filling that position?
Yes.
Okay. And so what services does the house manager provide?
Oversight. So oversight and reporting are the general services that the house manager provides. Generally, it, and I, again, I take this from a legal perspective, but in that sense, they act as a witness. They can, they can understand what the other residents are doing, and this is contrary, or in contrast to the general Oxford model, which is where generally the residents will report amongst themselves, amongst themselves, and kind of have their own processes to excluding residents. This is a little bit more autocratic in the sense that it comes from a top-down manager perspective, but it also makes sure that there is no in-house politicking in that regard. We've found that there are a lot of concerns in kind of how that model is run, so that's why we developed this model, to have a little bit more authority and a greater resource for the neighborhood should any concerns arise.
And my last question for the moment is, what are the responsibilities for people living at Michael House? What requirements?
I, I'm sorry, I could not enumerate those.
It was in the staff report, so I was just, you know, wondering to know, you know, if you have familiarity with, with that entire report.
I mean, clearly, the number one requirement is they have to be sober. The other, there's generally curfews that are involved, and they generally have to maintain some sort of employment or some sort of activity moving them forward in their life, whether it be schooling or, or something else to that regard. But as far as requirements go, again, the programming is not structured as, you have to be here at this class at this time. That's not necessarily it. The, that is more toward, the requirements for staying there are centered, again, around sobriety and, and doing what's necessary to make sure that the house is run properly. So you have curfews if needed, and then you're basically just keeping up with the other household duties.
And it gets to my initial question about structured programming that you provide. So in the staff report, it talked about that people are required to go to AA meetings, they're required to volunteer, they have weekly meetings with the house manager. That was on page 50 of the staff report. So I'm just trying to get to how structured is the programming that's provided, and I just wanted to know more about that. So I really appreciate your answers, Mr. Watts.
Sure. No, that's what, and that's, as far as, so we do, in some of our facilities, we have before, and I believe they have at this one as well, hosted AA meetings. So that, and oftentimes, there can be enough members in the house, and that goes back to kind of the therapeutic value, is if you're going to be hosting meetings like that, or maybe just having some small interpersonal kind of one-on-one situations, they're able to do that. Maybe the house is vacant with several of the members because they're at work, but by keeping a certain number of people in the house, that we're kind of able to always kind of have that structure and accountability to do that. But as far as the programming goes, so we'll host AA meetings occasionally. Again, I would defer to Mr. Carrato or the house manager for those specifics as to the frequency that those are conducted, but that would be, that would generally be it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a, I've just got a few questions to begin. I might come back when others come forward. But can you, can you give me a rundown, just, just a quick review? When you applied for the, or when Michael House applied for the two previous permits or applications, under what premise did you apply? I don't believe you asked for a reasonable accommodation at that point. So could you, as a family, so could you go back through that for just a minute?
Well, I would. I, and I don't, I don't want to say you're incorrect, but I believe our application was based on the same exact purpose that we're applying for now, which was for an accommodation under the definition of family.
Okay.
So the, our, our application as it sits today is really no different than those prior two applications were before.
And can you, I guess I want to sort of ask a little bit more about, it's come to my attention that the residents of this house are primarily, and I'm going from the, the Planning Commission, I, I watched that, that about 90% of the residents of this house are housed there through parole and probation, is that?
Through a combination of those two, that's quite possible, yes.
Did you consider transitional living facility as an appropriate group home or group type?
No.
Why not?
Well, because that's, that's never really been our model. We aren't, we aren't coming from an approach to try to fulfill a therapeutic or medical need in that regard, or actually conduct the therapy as the transitional living. or actually conduct the therapy as the transitional living distinction require. And that's, under the definition of transitional living, that's what I think makes that distinct. So that's, that's never really been the crux of our model.
I'm sorry, would you go back and say that again? So the transitional living facilities, there's, they're for folks who are primarily coming out of incarceration, though they could just be on probation. And they are helping folks move from incarceration back into society. They may or may not provide classes in the homes, but they may provide rides or ways to assist people to get therapy. I guess I would like you to explain again. You used therapeutic, saying that that's something that you do provide, and then you just said that you're not like a transitional house who has a requirement for that. And I'm just, I'm trying to understand the difference between the two. I'm not arguing your, your right to apply for whatever you want to, but I'm trying to understand why not transitional.
Well, and I guess I would say that that question's tough at the moment because I can't see the definition for transitional housing that sits under the code. But I guess I would refer to, off the top of my head, what I am aware of, is kind of the definition for a group home. But the, the purpose of why we were not seeking to be classified as a transitional housing or seeking to establish transitional housing, because we did not want to get in the business of administering therapy. And I think it's an important distinction that needs to be made. The therapeutic need that we're offering this under is simply the ability to come together, which I think is wholly different than therapy that may be offered in a one-on-one situation or therapy that may be offered by a therapist, a licensed LMHP for that matter. We're not trying to do that. Because that shifts the entire cost dynamic and it shifts the entire outlook as far as what those overhead costs would be for employing those persons to conduct that therapy. We think that need is met elsewhere. But what is lacking is a ride and a roof. I think there's plenty of, of therapists out there and there's other places to go that offer that. But what we're doing is kind of, there's therapists that don't offer. So in a sense that they could go attend therapy for drug and alcohol counseling. But they can't then go to sleep there. Does that make sense? So what we're doing is we're kind of filling up this other need, and we don't see any reason why, to create a one-stop shop for that. We can simply be one part of the triangle. We can fulfill one need, and that's simply the collaborative space of living together. And then the needs of, of therapy can be fulfilled by, by other resources in the community.
I, I don't have, I have just another question, maybe two. I'm aware that the state probation provides payment to providers at different levels. There's two different levels. Do you mind telling me what the state pays for a resident on probation staying at this Michael House? What's the daily rate?
I do not, I don't have that specific information, but Mr. Carrato, who is here with me, would have that specific.
I would like to know.
And I would, I would just defer that question to him.
Thank you.
Would you, if I may, would you like Mr. Carrato to come forward at this time?
That could be very helpful, just to.
Yeah, and if Mr. Watson, if you could stay here as well, I think we have other questions for you. But if, Mr. Carrato, could you please come forward and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Michael Carrato, Michael House. I did have a speech prepared, but I didn't know at what point I should do that.
Well, let's start with Councilwoman Washington's question first, and then we'll let you have some time to do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so there are two rates that probation pays for someone to have a place to live. And I'm curious, what is the rate that the state pays you per day for someone on probation?
So probation, at, at no locations in Lincoln do we have any clients that receive funding for probation because we do not have 24-hour, seven, 24-hours, seven-day-a-week supervision. We do have one location in Omaha that has that. We have eight locations total in Omaha, and only one of them has the 24-hour, seven requirement. So we do have individuals that are on probation, not presently, but in the past, that have paid a self-pay rate. We call it a self-pay rate.
Okay, and what is that self-pay rate?
So it's $25 a day, which comes out to be about $750 per month.
And do you have, you were very clear about probation, so do you have, do you receive state payments for any of your residents? And is it all self-paid, or is it some by the state? And whether they're probation or parole, what is that daily rate the state pays?
So parole, if they have a voucher, it's $65 a day and it's 30 days, generally 30 to 45 days.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Councilwoman Washington?
Right now.
Councilman Bowers has a question for you, Mr. Watson.
And I'll have another question for you, if you want to hang on a second. Okay, so you mentioned that there is an in-home manager because with the Oxford houses, there tends to be some in-house politicking that happens. Do you believe that Michael's houses, for the most part, are better run than Oxford houses?
No, I, I guess, to say, I'd be reluctant to make a quality judgment like that against Oxford houses. The, our model is more or less to address concerns from the community. What we have found is that community members tend to have, be a little bit more discerning about how Oxford houses are run because it's tough to figure out who to contact, who to call, if there's a problem. So our model addresses that function by having an authority person, a spokesperson there in the home. To say that one is objectively better than the other, I don't know that I could do that. But I think our model certainly addresses the needs of the community a little bit better.
In what other ways does your model differ from the Oxford house model?
Well, I mean, that, that's generally it. There's, I think some of that, that's really hard to say because from my understanding, each Oxford house may be modeled a little bit differently depending on their internal organizational structure and what are the rules that they have put in place amongst each Oxford house. But in contrast to that, I would say that, one, we do have onsite management, oversight and authority. But also, two, is that it is consistent, consistent across the board as to how it's, it's run and managed. You may walk into two different Oxford, I mean, as a client. And I, and I don't know how you can picture this yourself, but you could walk into two different Oxford houses and be in kind of two different environments, in that sense, and how they're run and how they're managed and what rules and expectations may be given to you. Not drastically different, but still different nonetheless. We're trying to make some consistency out of those. Put some consistency in those rules and how we function, but then also having the backstop of authority there. Now, another big distinction is, and some people get hung up on this, is that we are also a for-profit model. We do not, we.
I'm not hung up on the for-profit model, but what, what experts did you have working with you to create the model for Michael houses? Like what mental health, substance abuse experts, behavioral health experts went into creating the model specifically for Michael's houses?
I guess if, if you're ultimately asking whether we collaborated with any consultants to form those, we did not.
When I look at research that's done on the Oxford houses, there's a ton of studies that, you know, talk about the benefits and, you know, whatnot. But, I mean, essentially, what's also in front of us specifically, and I'll, I'll stop asking questions after this, so I'm not monopolizing time, but, you know, it's, we have a different model that has not been researched and tested as much as Oxford houses has been, has, has done. And I guess what, what evidence have you had with your specific model, like Oxford house has done, that has proven that your model works and is safe and effective and has good outcomes for people?
Well, I guess that's a little bit loaded question because we haven't had our model in, in development that long. Oxford house has been around since the late 60s, early 70s, if I recall correctly. So, and as they will tout themselves, they have been pathfinders in this arena. And I'm sure that they were probably looked upon some skepticism in their first couple of years as well. So ultimately, as far as good outcomes for the clients, that is still, that's still on a long-term scope. We're still trying to figure that out, and we hope that it is turning into good outcomes for the clients. But I guess if we look at those, I don't have any specific figures, but I would say that we really don't seem to have a lot of concern with losing clients. I would say our model is a success because our beds get filled regularly. From the perspective that we're looking at this from, we're not losing that many people to recidivism. Our beds are filling up fast, people are staying in there. And a lot of times when they move on, sometimes they will move on from our location to an Oxford house.
It just feels like we're gambling, right? Like, I mean, if, after, after this came up the first time around and to recently find out that there's another Michael's house that's, that's come up, I mean, there was no guarantee, you know, that the council would find in your favor. And instead of just being like a partner and upfront and saying like, okay, these are the ones that we have, or we want to open up another one, it just feels like gambling with people who are in a vulnerable position. It makes me feel, makes me feel, makes me feel not good. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Bowers. Councilman Beckius?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. So, is it your belief, or could you talk a little bit about, is it relevant? Any sort of therapeutic result from this kind of living arrangement? Is it relevant to what you're asking for from this body?
Well, I think certainly. We're, we're asking them to be able to come together with more than three unrelated persons. And the benefit of that is that they can pool their resources financially and they can consult with one another and work through their struggles together as a family. And we think that alone provides a therapeutic benefit.
My, my peer seems to be comparing one model versus another model. Is that relevant to the, the determination that you're asking from us?
No, no, I do not believe it is. I, I think either way, both models are asking for more people that are not related by blood, to not have the family that they grew up in prevent them from living in this neighborhood. That's the crux of what we're asking for, is that if I'm born to a family that's not living in this neighborhood and I need to live with a few additional people to be able to live here, can I do that? That's it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Watson at this time? Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
I just have, have one question, because you keep saying a family is only by blood, and I don't believe our code says that. I think, I believe our code talks about blood, marriage, adoption. Would you agree that that is what is written in our code? Or do you believe our code is only by blood?
No, you, you are correct, and then I'm, and I would apologize for glossing over that, yes. But it does also make accommodation for legal familial relations as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions for Mr. Watson? All right. I see none at this time. Thank you very much. Mr. Carrato, we'll give you your opportunity to give your remarks and see if we have any more questions for you.
Sure.
Thank you. Did you want to give your prepared remarks?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm a little.
That's all right.
Okay, so my name is Michael Carrato, owner of the Michael House, requesting reasonable accommodation for 12 disabled individuals with substance abuse history. So I'm a graduate from the University of Nebraska at Lincoln with an engineering degree. I'm a United States Marine, service disabled. I grew up in Omaha, Nebraska, with two fully hearing impaired or deaf parents who abused substances growing up. I was the oldest of four boys. I've grown up my entire life around people with disabilities and substance abuse. You know, I was that five-year-old boy who would pick up the phone, call the hospital, book appointments, get rental assistance, food stamps, so I grew up real quick. But with all the challenges, I was still able to assist my three little brothers to all have graduate college and have families of their own and, you know, break the cycle. So, you know, I don't really talk about this much, but it's important to talk about how my life's challenges have fueled my, you know, my passion and why we do at the Michael House. So a little about, about the Michael House, we have seven houses in Omaha and two apartment complexes and three of those houses in Lincoln. And houses in Omaha have been operating for about four years. Lincoln, it's been about two years. This property being about, yeah, and then this, this, this property being one of them. In Omaha, we house about 77 residents, and in Lincoln, about 30 residents. All of our houses in Omaha and Lincoln have had their use, in Omaha and Lincoln have been, have their use approved by the city, except for this property, and continue to be in good standing. And I'd love to answer your question later. I, I would like to talk about what we do for our residents, you know. So I know you guys are aware of the Oxford house, since their application for reasonable accommodation in August. Oxford is very successful with residents. They have over 1,000 houses internationally. Our houses are similar, but different. You know, I really looked at their model and I found some inconsistencies and things that I thought they could really improve on. You know, but I'm not disparaging, you know, anything about the Oxford house. They have helped countless individuals and helped a very similar population. However, I feel like there's a segment that's underserved. And so what we provide that Oxford does not is they, house managers, case managers, urine analysis tests, fully furnished houses, food, hygiene supplies, laundry supplies, and bedding. So we're not stuff governed like the Oxford. You know, when I first opened this, I, I thought about entertaining that, but I, I found quickly that that was a conflict of interest. If you have, you know, the same guys living in the house governing each other. So we supervise our own, our residents with myself and the three case managers, and we handle all conflicts and make sure they're following house rules that we have established and that all of our residents, they, they sign and agree to. So to be, to be a resident, you have to meet three requirements. You must be 18 and older, be sober, and pass urine analysis and have a willingness to stay sober and improve your life. Now, as you guys are probably aware, Nebraska has a homeless problem, as well as the rest of the United States. Landlords are allowed to discriminate on job history, rental history, credit and income requirements. If you do not meet those requirements, you will be homeless. And if you're homeless, what chances do you have not to relapse and re-fed? Now, I understand there's homeless shelters out there, but those aren't always the best situations and most places have a waiting list or are completely full. So, you know, if you are homeless, you know, what chances do you have not to relapse or re-fed? You know, I'd say almost 0%. You know, the Michael House is one of the solutions to the homeless and substance abuse epidemic that this community experiences. You know, as I said before, we have house rules, you know, I'm not going to list them all for the sake of time, but just to breeze over some of them. You must be employed within two weeks of moving in, follow our curfew, be a good neighbor and resident, keep the house clean, go to three AA or NA meetings a week, random urine, urine analysis test every two weeks or, which is at a minimum, or after any rule violation. Each house also has a live-in house manager that assists with the accountability. So also Oxford does not assist with employment. I think that's a big pitfall of Oxford. So we do. So we place them with employers that fit their skills. Most of the residents that come to us do not have proper state ID, birth certificate, social security card to apply for employment. A lot of agencies, you know, like Oxford, they do not supply help for that. We do, we actually fund that for them. We do that within their first week of arriving at our house. We also assist them within the first two weeks of applying for Medicaid, disability if applicable, SNAP cards, and doctors' visits they need to go to, and medications. In addition, we provide food, pantry, laundry supplies, hygiene supplies, sheets, blankets, pillows, utilities, furniture, and internet. Those are all things that Oxford doesn't supply. So basically, if you're a new resident, you have everything you need to live and no barriers to getting employment and having, and being a productive taxpaying resident on your way to independence. to independence. Also, we don't provide all the help, of course, so we refer to third-party community resources for our 360-degree approach to the productivity of our clients, to qualifying individuals. So, that includes clothing, work boots, safety gear for work, forklift training, CDL training, and behavioral health services, to name a few. So, we ask that you approve 2648 Washington for reasonable accommodation, as you approve our two other houses and the Oxford House to continue and provide a level of service to community residents. I also have a financial report I'd like to share with you, so you can see why we financially need to have the 12 individuals. And then I also have the letter that I sent to all of the neighbors of the neighborhood to give them our contact information if they need to contact us. So, I'd be happy answering any questions you have. Would you like me to hand this around?
Yes, our clerk can do that for you. And Councilman Beckus, you're recognized, and then Council, and then Councilwoman Washington?
Yes, thank you. Hi.
Hi.
So, when you were speaking here just now, maybe about a minute, minute and a half ago, two minutes ago, you said that, as I heard, drug testing was a requirement to live in the house, but then also requirement to attend the relevant either AA or NA meetings, and that's a requirement of living in the house? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
Okay. So, although, living together may be a therapeutic response, you are requiring additional therapy and recovery services as a condition of living in the house?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. When you were front of the Planning Commission, I guess I'm trying to understand, the financial report that you're, you're handing out, and thank you, I look forward to reviewing that. But you had said that you were, or at least it was said during the Planning Commission hearing, that 12 was just if you had more residents needing housing, but that you did not, you did not need to have 12 in this house. And so, could you explain the differences between what was said a couple of weeks ago and what you're saying now? Now, you're saying it is financially necessary to have fully 12 people in this house.
Yes, so, as you know, so, you know, when we have individuals from parole, it's not guaranteed at all. You know, it's as needed, depending on type of year, they approve them once a month. So, it's not something you can base a business upon. So, that budget that I have there is for all self-pay individuals. So, so, for example, parole has, they have a new contract that we're applying for, we may not get it. So, that is, that is the reason. And, and I believe, to answer your earlier question, I just forgot to answer, that Oxford does require AA and NA meetings at their houses as well, so.
You do as well.
Yes, we do. Yes.
Can I ask one more question? Can you tell me, can you tell me a little bit about the parole board meeting last week?
You know, that's, that's a good question. I was, I was not in attendance, nor were anybody from the Michael House was in attendance. We actually had a, we were notified Thursday around 4:00 that the parole clients were to be relocated. We were not given any type of answer of why. We received it from our, our point of contact with parole. And I asked her what was the reason, and she said she had no reason. I sent, I left a voicemail, because I didn't have any email for Ms. Rosalynn Cotton, I believe. She's on the board. She has not given me an answer. I left a message with the director of parole, Ken Quinn. I've not received an answer. Today, we had our weekly parole meeting that we always have, and everything went well, and talked about the parole clients that we had, and asked her again if she knew what the reason was. She said she did not know the reason. She said the only reason that she can think of was there was one individual, who I believe is in attendance today, spoke at this meeting, and based on what he said, they, they made that decision. However, I've not seen any emails, nothing, no conversations. As, I asked her if we did anything incorrectly, and she said no. I asked her if there was any rules we violated, she said no, because she's our main point of contact, and she, she actually, every parole client that we would have would be her client, that she has daily interaction with. So, I haven't heard her saying anything. And, and after that meeting, I sat in, I sat outside Ken Quinn's office for about 20 minutes hoping to catch him, and he wasn't available, so.
Thank you. I just became, someone gave me a call and told me that there was a parole hearing. I, I think I heard it on Friday, and I was just curious what your take was.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything. I would love to know. I think we should have some recourse to that. From my understanding, it was a squeak, there was a squeaky wheel, you know, somebody was wasting their opinions, and it wasn't necessarily based on any fact, or, but nobody was there. Even the parole officer wasn't there. I wasn't there. I wasn't invited to be there. I wasn't allowed to defend myself or, or organization, so I have no idea.
Thank you.
Councilman Bowers?
So, I didn't know that. So, there was a, Councilwoman Washington, so there was a parole hearing and?
Parole board.
Parole board hearing, and then all the parole, all your parole, parole clients had to be relocated? You know, right as that conversation was happening, I was looking at the statistics that you had on here about, you know, who your residents are and the statistics that you had from folks that, that you serve. And how can we not come forward before, when this conversation was being had in July and August? Because when I look at the, the list of approvals, I mean, Oxford House and Michael's were like a week apart, right? I mean, and essentially, they were kind of packaged together. And when you were opening up the third house, or you already, it sounds like you already had the third house in operation, if it's been there for two years, why not come forward then and say, I have another house, I want to make sure that I do right by my residents, so that way they don't have to face eviction because they're staying with me?
Yes, so, that house has been, I believe that's right, about July, August, so not, not, not a year in existence. Took us about two months to, you know, do the, get it furnished and do the, install security cameras and do the things that we normally do to our houses. So, when we went through the reasonable accommodation for the first two houses, I believe it took almost a year from the time of, when we were, when we were requested to, before we actually had our time to speak to the planning department. For various reasons, scheduling reasons, I also think that the city didn't know how to classify it.
But like, why not like, that day at the open microphone session, or the next day, say, call up the planning department or any of the council members, especially ones that have been very sympathetic to your cause, and say, I have another house, I want to make sure that my residents are protected? Because when I look at these statistics, I hear that people are being relocated, it makes me concerned for people that are staying in your house.
No, I, I spoke with, at the time of the hear, so before our hearing, about two or three months, when I was buying this house, I asked my attorney, I said, you know, hey, should we go ahead and apply for this house? And he said no, because we have to respond to, we're not breaking, I guess, we have to respond to a complaint. And because these individuals are protected by FHA, because they're, you know, individuals with the disability. So, then, when we were having those conversations, I, I had the conversation with Ms. Abby Littrell, that hey, we have another house, and it's going to be, you know, going to be coming. And, and, and then I spoke with my attorney about it, and he said there's no need to apply, because we have to respond to a complaint. Because, how he explained it to me, because in, in the city of Omaha, it's very different, because there, it's very clear, because the first two houses, first house that I ran, we went through the city, and they had to figure it out, and we were kind of like one of the first ones. And then they streamlined it, and then after that, I applied ahead, ahead of time every single time, and it was, it would be like one week turnaround, and it was a simple email, and they turned around and just sent us a certificate saying, small group living disabled. And so, that was my impression of what was happening here. So, I, I talked to Steve about, Steve with the planning department, saying that they were working on some legislation. And so, I actually volunteered to help with that, and, you know, they didn't reach out to me, I had to reach out to them. And so, I, I just saw the first draft like a couple of weeks ago. And, but, you know, speaking with the attorney, it's, it's, you know, it's three persons or less is the ordinance here in Lincoln. And we have to respond to a complaint on that, on that three persons or less. So, soon as I got that complaint, and we were waiting for it, and we responded to that complaint immediately. And speaking with Steve, you know, we're just talking about, you know, this new legislation, and I asked him, I said, okay, there's over 20 houses that Oxford has in Lincoln. Well, I asked him first, I said, how many other houses are going through this in, in the city of Lincoln? There's a lot of houses here. And he said, well, only you and the Oxford House. And I said, okay, how many Oxford houses has there been? And there's, he said, well, just the one that you, that you were a part of, grouped together. And I said, okay, well, what about the other 20 properties they have? There's 20 of them. You know, I'm friends, or I used to be friends with one of the owners that, he sold his house, but what about them? And he said, well, they haven't had a city complaint yet. So, if, you know, if anybody wants to make a complaint on all those houses, they're all going to come through the same thing. I mean, there's probably, I don't know, 40, 50 houses operating in the city of Lincoln presently right now that are waiting for the same thing. I, I talked to individuals, because we're in a lot of the same rooms a lot of time, and they ask me about what I'm going through. I guess I'm kind of the, which unfortunately it is, but the first ones to really get brought down this path, but for whatever reason, they're not going down this avenue. But, you know, but in no way do I want to avoid any rules, you know. Like I said, so my other company is a construction company. I file permits all the time. I have license through there, you know.
So, essentially, like, what I'm hearing you say is that, like, you had to wait until someone caught you breaking the law in order to file, to get a reasonable accommodation? It's kind of what I'm hearing you say.
Caught isn't the right word, because I, I asked my attorney if that was the correct way to do it, and he said you cannot act without the complaint, because you're not violating the federal law.
And I, I think that those actions put your residents at risk, and I don't know if that meets a, a therapeutic accommodation, or when we look at the specific circumstances of this particular case, or is there alternative reasonable accommodations? I mean, it feels like you're putting your folks at risk, and that, that I think is scary, and I, I don't think that that's appropriate, especially hearing that a, a segment of your folks had to be relocated, and we don't know why. I mean, like, if everything was being followed to the T, I don't know, it just, it, it seems weird, it seems sketch, I don't know if it necessarily meets a therapeutic need when people can be evicted whenever. I have a lot of other comments, but I won't, I'll stop rambling. Most folks know that I don't usually have a back and forth at these type of meetings, and so, this is just an issue that I, I feel very passionate about, so I'll dial it down. I mean, do you have any response to that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm, I guess I'm really disappointed that I made you think that way, because that's never what I intended to do. I went through the first process, I presented myself, I spoke with Abby Littrell, I spoke with Steve, spoke with my attorney. I don't know, is there an application to, you know, is there a route that I could have gone? I still don't know that. If I was to open, or was interested in opening another house, I don't know of, of a route to go. It was never presented to me. You know, I spoke with Steve on this new ordinance, I'm helping him out.
So, you did know that there was a new ordinance that was being made to address this issue? And then like, I mean, I guess, how can we trust that there's only three other, three of these locations out there in Lincoln? And, like I said, I feel like trust has been broken, I don't feel like the residents necessarily, I don't know if I necessarily see an obligation to the residents that's been made to them. I think that this is an undue burden on the city. I do think this is an, I mean, as a social worker, if there was 12 new folks that had to go find housing and go through some of our wonderful nonprofits, or through some of our social safety net programs, because they unceremoniously got kicked out of your program, it probably just wasn't one person doing one thing, and one person got evicted. I mean, there had to have been something more fundamental to uproot, you know, an entire segment of your folks, and we don't even know what that is. And I guess, I don't think necessarily a public forum is necessarily the appropriate place to go through all that, but I'm sure I'll have more comments later, or more questions later, as we hear from some folks across the board on this issue. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Bowers. Any other questions for Mr. Carrato at this point? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
I just would like to, I guess, in a sense, repeat what Mr. Bowers had mentioned earlier about what is the evidence that your, people that you're serving are benefiting? So, you have this program in Omaha, so you have some history. So, what is the evidence of success of your program? And how do you track that?
So, we have, we have a spreadsheet that we, where we list where individuals go after they leave, and we have a continual relationship with the city, the state. They refer to us because they see how the individuals, when they come to us, how, how they're treated, how they're helped, and how they progress. If, if it was an issue, we wouldn't receive, you know, contracts and referrals.
So, I guess, I don't understand exactly how you determine the success. You said that other people are, they're placing them there, is what you're saying? Is that, that's your evidence of success? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so, so, okay, so I'll say this. So, 90% of, of our residents are employed within the first two weeks, and many of them haven't had employment for many years. And so, that is one measure. Another measure is having individuals stay, like, we have like certificates that we give to our residents if they stay for 90 days and they graduate. So, I would say, you know, about 50% make it to that point. Let's see, we, so, it's, it's the employment, and then also the, when we, when they, when they leave us, when they go to permanent housing. So, we help, we help find them apartments, go to other housing, it could be the Oxford House, because the Oxford House will reject certain individuals because they're not the level of need that they need, they have. So, I guess it's, it's the referrals from when they leave, when they leave us.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Councilwoman Suarez, thank you. You, you generated another question for me. So, you said that one of the measures that you have is 90% employment, and then you said, and then how long someone's there? And so, I'm curious, is the 90-day graduation, is that a 90 days clean and sober, or is it just 90 days living? So, what's the, what are you tracking if they're there for 90 days?
Really, it's, so, in order to be at the house, you have to follow the house rules, so you have to have employment. So, there's all these lists of rules, so you have to go into your AA and NA meetings, you have to be honoring your commitments, whatever they may be, you know, with the state or any other requirements. And then it's them finishing their time with us and moving on to permanent housing.
Okay.
And 30 days is just really like a benchmark that we set. It could be 30 days. It could be 30 days, it could be, you know, 120 days. It could be, you know, we have some individuals that are with us for a year, very few though, but...
So this is, they're clean and sober, they're passing all their drug tests, they're employed, they're going to AA, following other house rules. And you said you get about 50% of your residents are able to do that, whether it's for 90 days or 30 days?
Yeah, some individuals just leave, and you just don't know where they go. But the, you know, I guess it's important to mention that, like, you know, it's not like what we provide is, you know, our house rules isn't a forced upon requirement. It's completely voluntary. So it's just something that they agree to when they come to us. They can leave at any time. They could be here for a week, and they just say, "Hey, you know, this is not for me." And, okay, that's fine, you know, it's not a requirement. But it's, what we found is, by having the rules that we have, and having requirements like the curfew, like doing the drug testing, that is the strongest possibility for them to continue on into permanent housing. Because like I said before, like, these individuals, you know, they'll come out, rehab, or any little place, and they don't have, you know, a dollar to their name. They might not have any clothing, they have no resources. So when they come to us, it's, you know, if you go to a landlord, they're not going to refer you to a behavioral health place. They're not going to refer you, like, "Hey, this is where you can get clothing." "Hey, what's your aspirations in life? Do you want to be a CDL driver?" "Okay, so here's a class." That's what we do. We try and bring individuals that need the help, and we get them the help, and we pass them along.
All right, I'm done for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Beckius.
There's been some discussions about therapy, and how success or not success, or if you're providing enough, what would, I think the basis, as I understand it, is, are these people disabled? And my question to you is, is everyone who is living in this house seeking treatment for drug or alcohol abuse?
Okay, so every individual that comes to our house has admitted to substance abuse. We're not required to, we're not allowed to ask directly because of HIPAA reasons, but there's ways you can find out, you know. There's, there's ways you can find out. But we do not offer therapy in terms of therapy, because then we are a medical facility. But I think when the word "therapy" is used, it's more, I think the term is "therapeutic", which means having a group of guys living together. It's therapeutic that they're together.
Yeah.
Is that clear? I guess I want to be clear.
You know, there's all sorts of different types of therapies. I'm not really interested in that. I guess my question is, is that the condition under which you're applying is stating that all of these folks are disabled?
Yes.
So is it a condition of living in a Michael House that these folks are in recovery?
In their agreement, yeah, answer is yes. In their agreement, it says that I have a substance abuse, history, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have one. Mr. Watson talked about your house managers, and described them as witnesses to the other, to your participants, to your residents. It's sort of an autocratic position, he said. Troubles me a bit to think of the setting and having an autocratic house manager. So tell me more of what they do and what witnessing may mean.
Can you define autocratic?
Well, maybe Mr. Watson should define it if he wants to come back up. Because I don't want to see people that are vulnerable being in an autocratic situation. So talk to us about what that might mean.
Well, in that sense, it's having a central decision maker, who's not beholden to a vote by the rest of the members of the House, which is, my understanding is the contrast of the Oxford model.
Okay.
Not self-protected.
So when you use autocratic, that's what you were meaning?
Yes.
For a house manager. Does the house manager live on site?
So we have a house manager that lives on site at each location. Sometimes we have two, depending on situation. We also have two case managers, which two are present, and which will be speaking later. And to answer the autocratic, you know, what I found, and again, I'm not disparaging Oxford or any other organizations, it's not my business to do so, but when, you know, researching the Oxford model, when I saw that all the residents that live in the house, let's say there's six of them, you know, or I guess in this location, let's say there's 14 of them, the one that you guys approved, let's say they're all using. So, and if it's a majority vote, and you want to vote, make a vote on if somebody's going to leave or something's going to happen, you're compromised. So the idea is, the house manager itself, he is correct that the house manager itself is a witness. But we have security cameras in the house, you know, in all the living areas, hallways, kitchen, nothing in the bedroom or bathrooms on the outside. And we gather information, we meet with the individuals, and if we feel like they're violating a rule, then we make the decision. We're not compromised in that sense. We're, you know, I'm not a substance abuser myself, and I don't live in the house. So we're not compromised to make that decision. So hopefully that answers your question.
Is the house manager someone who's experienced abuse that is part of your program? Or is it just someone else?
Our rule, and it's the same rule that other organizations use, is, and we follow that rule, is six months from any type of interaction with police or failed drug test. I guess in the four years I've been doing this, I've, maybe the, I think I've only had one individual that, who was a client who later became a manager. Just because of that time period, it's, you know, a long time period. By then, they usually move on and are living independently. But, no, they're, yeah. Yes, that answers your question.
Is it something you would consider as part of your model? To have a house manager who lived in the home become a house manager?
I would consider it, but what I found is that, you know, an individual that's a house manager that has substance abuse can better relate with the daily struggles of someone with an addiction. So, you know, they're used to, they're kind of like a mentor, really. If you really think about it, like, if you're a resident living in the house, and you see this person, you're like, "Hey, this is somebody who I aspire to be. Look at what he's doing. He's been employed for a long time. He's a manager of this house. I aspire to be him." So this individual probably has lots more experiences of being sober and dealing with addiction. So probably can talk them down off of a ledge if they're really stressed out about a work incident. You know, for you and me, if we had an argument with our boss, you know, we'd probably just go home and talk to our spouse about it. But this, you know, these individuals, they'll just go buy a bottle at the gas station. And then this individual, the house manager, will say, "Hey, you know, don't do this. You know, I've been in your shoes. Let me help you, let me coach you through this incident, you know. And if I can do it, you can do it." So I feel like there is a, if I had someone that did not have that background, like, for example, me, like personally, right? If you were my resident, and I told you, hey, like, "You need to stay sober, like, you need to do this and do that," and then he's going to tell, I've had this conversation before. You don't know what I've been through. You don't know what I've been going through. You have no idea, you know. So, that's right, you know, my parents have, I haven't. So I think it's better coming from that.
Okay.
Place. And that's where I think that therapeutic part kind of comes in.
Thank you for that. My last question is, you explained your security cameras, so you could be certain that everybody's following the rules, so to speak. But what about protection for the residents? What do you do to ensure their safety? What do you have in place for them?
So we have a, you know, we have the house manager in place, we have a grievance policy. So if there's any issues, they can report that. We have our case managers. It's 24/7, they can answer, they can call those numbers. But yeah, just open communication, open lines. We really, in Lincoln, we've never had any kind of physical altercation ever in the city of Lincoln, so.
I guess I did think of one more question in that regard. So the letter, thank you for distributing, that you sent, distributed to the neighbors, I assume in Lincoln, correct? The one that we got, this one?
Yes.
But I was looking for a date. How long, when did this get distributed, do you recall? Recently, or?
Actually, it was recommended from the Planning Board. They mentioned it at that meeting, and that never occurred to me. I believe it was the same woman who was sitting in your seat, she recommended it. Yes, yes, that's right. And then she recommended it, and I said, "That's a great idea." And so I did that within a couple of weeks.
After the Planning Commission met, correct?
Yes.
Very good. That's all I have, unless there's anything else from the council. Okay, all right. Thank you to both of the applicants. Next testifier, we have two places to sign in. So two people can approach at one time, and go ahead and sign in, please. And we can get both microphones going as necessary, so.
Just as a reminder, for public testimony, everyone that is testifying is allowed five minutes. Four minutes of time will be taken, and then the ringer will go off. That will be your one-minute reminder. I'll also notify you, you have one minute remaining. And then I'll call time.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Carmen Mauer. I live at 1929 C Street and am active in the Near South Neighborhood Association. I am here in opposition to miscellaneous item 22014, the request to waive zoning at 2648 Washington Street, a Michael's House which has already been established at that location. From experience, I know that you seriously consider the concerns of your constituents, and I thank you. I have already provided you with a written email and attachment that express my viewpoint. So I will not take time to reiterate information you already have. I will note and emphasize that the municipal code requires this applicant to provide documentation supporting financial, therapeutic, or other necessity in order for you to waive the applicable zoning law. It's my understanding that the Planning Commission found this application lacking in that respect. And I agree, Michael's House simply failed to meet its burden of proof under the code. I would ask you to echo the commission's finding and deny this request. The past approvals do not establish a precedent, any more than speeding past the sheriff in the median means that you always get away with speeding past the sheriff in the median. Denial of this request is the short-term fix for this particular concern. But I think you might all agree with me that we have a longer-term problem. I feel confident that you do not want to see opposition from the Near South Neighborhood and other impacted neighborhoods every time this kind of request comes up before you. I would much rather be attending Ed Zimmer's presentation on Standing Bear tonight, but instead, I'm here. So let's please fix this. Sixteen neighbors, including persons genuinely interested and actively involved in the therapy and care of persons with a history of substance abuse, met informally Saturday morning, and to a person, each one expressed support for a more robust process. One that avoids mere housing and has the genuine needs of disabled persons at heart. I don't know for certain, but I suspect if our process first and foremost focused on the needs of disabled people, and avoided focus on maximizing revenues, the concerns of both disabled persons and neighborhoods would likely be resolved. Other cities require genuine persuasive evidence that the number of residents proposed by the applicant is necessary. Broad self-serving unsubstantiated statements like "the more residents, the better" does not get the job done in Allentown, Pennsylvania. In other cities where a group states that it is equivalent to a family, the applicant must show that the group is indeed something akin to a family. These are cases that are reported that we can refer you to. There is a way forward that is in the best interests of all. While my Neighborhood Association doesn't have the resources to hire attorneys, we have learned a lot about this issue over the past 14-plus months. We are ready to support and cooperate and work with the city of Lincoln to craft a lasting solution. We think our input, experience, and knowledge have real value in that endeavor. So let me review first, please deny miscellaneous item 22014 for failure to show the requisite need required under the code. And number two, let's work to fix this together for the future, because I want to go to Ed Zimmer's talks. Thank you very much for your attention.
Sorry. Thank you very much, Ms. Mauer. Questions? Councilman Beckius.
Hello, hi. Thank you for coming down and testifying today. So you believe that the crux of the argument here has to do with the zoning law and not the request for reasonable accommodation?
Correct. My, the crux of my point today is that if you look at your own code, that this applicant has not even met what I think, I personally, in my opinion, is a rather low bar, to show that this has either financial, therapeutic, or other need. It's simply, they simply didn't meet their burden of proof in what they showed. And I believe that your review of the Planning Commission's deliberations would show that.
Other, yeah, thank you, Councilman. Other questions from Ms. Mauer? I have one. First of all, I know that you're an attorney, so I do think Near South is lucky, fortunate to have you involved, and I know you're not...
I'm not qualified to practice anymore of those, thankfully.
But I know you don't. I know you're not playing attorney today. Do you recall getting the letter distributed at this time by Michael House?
I have not received it, and I don't know if it was delivered to, say, the president of our Neighborhood Association. So I don't know, but I've not seen it.
Okay, great. Thanks for your testimony today. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Bowers.
Well, I didn't realize you were an attorney. And so I got a question, and feel free not to answer this question.
I just have a law degree.
When, when the talk is about, is this a therapeutic accommodation that's being provided? Does folks who are being taken out unceremoniously harm the ability of that accommodation to then be therapeutic? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know that I'm qualified to answer that in any case. Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you again for being here. Next testifier, please.
My name is Destiny Camuso, 1645 N Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68521. I'm here on behalf of the Mental Health Association of Nebraska. Currently, I am the CARES Program Coordinator. But previously, I assisted in the development, implementation, and overall supervision of programs and staff at both the Lincoln Kia House and Hanu Home. Providing safe and affordable transitional living for men and women with addiction and mental health issues coming out of prison is important because these individuals are at heightened risk of relapse, crime, and even suicide. Having a safe and supportive environment to return to is essential for their recovery, as it provides a space where individuals can focus on rebuilding their lives and getting back on track. Additionally, transitioning into the community can be overwhelming for those with addiction and mental health issues, which can trigger or worsen the already tough road ahead of them. Transitional housing offers an opportunity to develop skills and gain access to the right resources that can help prevent them from returning to prison. City and state regulations and/or standards for providers who receive state funding for parolees and probationers are necessary to ensure the safety of the residents and the public, as well as to ensure that the services offered by the provider meet certain standards. These standards are established to ensure that those in need of transitional living services receive the necessary help they need to successfully reintegrate into society. The regulations also help reduce the likelihood of pop-up transitional housing providers engaging in fraud and/or abuse. I think it's important to note that this isn't the first time the Michael House has been before this. been before the city, and not them coming to you on their own. I've had the opportunity to work with individuals who have lived at one of the three Michael's Houses, and I've rarely heard of them referred to as Michael Houses, but rather Trap Houses. There's no supervision, there's certainly no therapeutic value. That's a term thrown around often by Michael's House staff. I would also like to ask if any of you have ever developed or maintained a family in 30 days? No, neither. The other thing that I wanted to say is that Michael did corner me in the back of this room before this hearing, and basically told, said it was unprofessional for us to be here to advocate for the people that we all serve. He did tell me that, he did tell me that I'm here to make a commercial for my organization. And basically, wanted me to mind my own business. I've had some experiences, the house manager stuff, you know, the house manager is typically someone who's lived there longer, you know, maybe not on parole or probation. I know of one that became the house manager the next day from signing his parole papers, and my participant found his, you know, paraphernalia and threw it away. And I got pictures and screenshots of all of that. It took seven days for him to see an actual Michael's House staff member. And I, I, for me, Hanu Home is a 20-bedroom, 14-bathroom building. We put one individual per bedroom. And somehow, our director, Casey Parker, has been able to finance that, and that's by diversifying our funding, that's by, you know, seeking grant funds, that's not just relying on parole or probation funds. But if we pull out our calculators and we do the math, 1950 a month per parolee times 12-
One minute?
Is $23,000 a month. And I'm guessing, this is an assumption, that the mortgage on that house is about $1,600 a month. So the, the financial part for me is, that's hard. That's, that's really hard. We at MHA definitely don't live in big, rich houses, and our pockets aren't rich, but our lives are, and the lives of our participants are. And I think that it says a lot, the difference between not-for-profit and for-profit. And I will end with cameras. Do not make good staff, neighbors, or family.
Thank you, Destiny, for your testimony. Any questions or, yes, Councilman Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming forward and testifying. I want to make sure I understand, your testimony is the-
Opposition.
Because of lack of treatment, lack of therapeutic-
There's no-
And the financial incentive, those two items?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Washington?
I have no idea if that works.
Can anybody not make this thing work?
We're still on Destiny's, we'll be right with you, Terry. Okay.
My name's Terry Ray.
Thank you.
That you said correctly.
Okay. Destiny, we have one more question from Councilwoman Washington, if you don't mind. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for coming down. I know it's, I'm familiar with Mental Health Association and your, your houses, and as there was earlier testimony to the fact that there's a mentoring relationship between the house manager of Michael House and the residents, and I was curious if you read that as sort of a peer support method. I know that you, I think, I believe MHA uses a peer support method.
I would, in my opinion, that I, that's not, not, not close, not even close.
And is the peer support method a method that's trained?
It is. There is a training, but also, we, we staff our staff that work inside the houses, they're not people that also live there together with our participants. They might have, you know, personal lived experience, a lot of them do, but they, they don't live at our places. They're actually staff, and they have a job, you know, to do. They are very well-trained. We have lots and lots of training.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilman Bowers?
Thanks so much for coming down. You know, I just wanted to say, to the comment about coming down, just making a commercial for your program, I think it's great when we try to let folks in Lincoln know what resources are out there to help them, or to help provide resources to people that help people that are looking for resources. So if it's okay with, with the chair, would you like to tell us, like, give us like a quick breakdown of your program, like, in about a minute or less, about what you all do, and how, if someone's looking for services, they can come to you?
Yep. The Mental, the Mental Health Association is a completely peer-run organization, from our Board of Directors down. We have a number of different programs. The ones that would be important today would be our re-entry programs. We offer in-prison programming. And then in-community, we offer supported employment to any individual, completely free, outreach-free. Our Hanu Home, all of our programs are completely free to the individuals that utilize them. We do no self-pay. If we don't have a party willing to pay for that person, then we have a grant that will cover those costs. Peer support is 24/7. It's not Monday through Friday, nine to five. We run warm lines out of both of our houses, so people who don't even live there, they can call 24/7 to get support. You can do day visits, you can, I mean, we have a ton of programming, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay? Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Destiny. Next testifier.
Next testifier is me. How you make this thing work? I deal with four-legged. Yep. I am the founder of South Salt Creek Area Neighborhood Association. We are not a 501(c)(3) PPP. Now, you have how many dead cops? Now, I understand that it's so important to have this money. This one here, he's a class, I don't know how this works, he's a class act. We've got two grandbabies, right? Now, do you know what the law in the United States of America says about the American flag? And it's posted. Now, I understand, oh, we have all these four, are they called four-letter words? No. Like, hell, let me show you. This here, they call a Polaroid. You get a picture, I get a picture, Safety Deposit Box gets a picture. Now, see that little, the young man back there? Born 1982. Now, we call him Fat Boy, and not because he's fat. He wants to go to Sturgis. I don't want my people to take his clothes from him, so I gotta teach him what a fat boy is. Now, if you don't know what a fat boy is, you better open up your wallet. You're becoming, now, make this thing work, because we're gonna show the discrimination. It's called jail, and I'm called the warden, and I'm called, whatever you think you need to call me, you say to my face. Now, young man, dude, I promised my Uncle Kermit, born 1937, I would not say "lot lizard." It just came out there. These are for your grandbabies. Now, I know that, see that, him back there? He's here to protect you, right? And I'm here to protect him. Now, I think this is the biggest load of crap that I have ever heard in my entire life, but, because we are on the internet, and it is so wonderful. Now, I have to address you, and this is why. The world I come from, huh, when little Hormel came to us, uh, uh, she's 50 pounds, she ended up being a 300-pound sow on her own trike. So when you said you're a man and your house is clean, I went, "Well, I'm called the warden." But, you know, you do what you need to do. It is a load of crap. His name is Sir Al Capone. Now, when you Google him, understand, he don't really care what you say. He poops orange, he likes carrots, he doesn't do a needle, doesn't hit the pipe. You come in that house, anywhere near that little man, that little man back there, he gotta get up here, and he gotta show out, and then my people gotta get here, and we're gonna say, what's gonna happen? We have us a throwdown, aren't we? Now, it is called jail, J-A-I-L, not freebies. And these boobs are mine, and no, you cannot see them. And let's see, how much more time I got?
A minute thirty-two.
Ah, hell. Do you know how a Polaroid works? This is how it works. Take this to them, so I don't throw it at them.
Oh, I can't.
Hell, how we gonna get this to you? Somebody, please come. Don't say "lot lizard." Okay, this here is, it's dated 2011. When'd you get your first dead cop? When was that? When'd you get your second dead cop?
One minute?
Now, that veteran in distress I have, is that he was born 1922, his mom in 1925. Now, if you weren't born then, I don't want to hear your crap. Now, if the firemen's have to come, guess what? You're all going to jail.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Casey Parker.
Hi.
Hi.
Again, my, my name is Casey Parker. I am the Executive Director of the Mental Health Association. I wasn't planning to speak today, but I feel it necessary. I want you all to know, and the people behind me, that MHA is not about not having safe, affordable housing for people coming out into our community. I think it is essential for that to happen. What we want, and what we want to advocate for, is the safe and affordable part of that. I mean, there, we can't just open up houses, and to me, no, I'm not a therapist. I know some of you are, you know, but I'm not a therapist, but I, for the life of me, cannot see how putting 12 unrelated people in a house. I can, I have struggles with my own family, and it's not traditional family. I'm not talking about it needs to be a traditional family. I'm talking about 12 people, unrelated, that don't know each other, all of a sudden becoming this family and are supposed to support each other. I can't imagine what that would feel like. I know that they already struggle when they're incarcerated. They're double-bunked, by no, I mean, and it's all, that's a whole different issue as far as sentence structures and all of that. But I really have a hard time understanding where it is therapeutic, therapeutic. You talk about transitional living. Transitional living doesn't mean therapeutic. We offer transitional living. We do no clinical programming whatsoever. However, when you asked the question about structured programming, I didn't feel like you got an answer. UA is not structured programming. Going, sending people to an AA meeting is not structured programming. You know, having stuff onsite, we call it vocational life skills, that's what we have been taught through the Department of Corrections of what that looks like. It's looking at vocational skills, it's looking at resume building, it's looking at employment, it's looking at how to talk to landlords. It's also looking at how to deal with a panic attack when you're first coming out, because you don't know how to be in the grocery store. There's so much more to it than housing and that, that roof over your head, and, and the dollar that's coming in. From what I believe I heard, and I may have been wrong, but what I thought I heard was that he gave you the budget for a self-pay, which is $750 per person, right? So in my calculation, which I will clarify, I'm far from a mathematician, I have a really hard time with math, but when I do the math of that, I come up with about 108 grand a year, so, at full capacity. That is completely different than if you're housing 12 people on parole at a rate of $65 a day. Then you're looking at about $280,000 a year, if not more. And for me, to understand why you can't take some of those funds and put them back into the programming and the care of the people where that money belongs, that's what's important. So I would love to have Michael Houses, Oxford Houses, MHA Houses. There, there's no possible way that we could comfortably house all the people that are coming out safely. There's no competition there for us. There isn't, because there's plenty of people that are coming out that need housing. All we're asking and advocating for is that it's done correctly, it's done with the people in mind, and not the for-profits, and that it's done in a way that does foster recovery and moving forward in a life that they can be successful. I, I do not understand how putting 12 people in a house can be, I mean, one person struggles, and then you get that ripple effect, and it, we've seen it. I've been doing this for 17 years, and we do single-room occupancy for a reason. And that, and there are evidence-based practices that show that this works, that does have evidence behind it. There is supported housing. Peer support is an evidence-based practice, and there is lots of training that goes along with it. And there is a fidelity to the model. We get outside audits to say that we are sticking to that model. So it's not just opening up a shop and, and bringing people in.
One minute?
So I hope that you will hear me, and that MHA is not opposed to safe, affordable housing. We want people to meet the code, we want people to be safe, and all we're asking is that people are willing to jump through what, to me, is necessary to jump through to make sure that happens. So I am in opposition of this. I don't even know, so, thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Casey? Thanks so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much appreciated. Next testifier?
Hi, I'm Jason Whitmer, and I was gonna speak about, so I also work for the Mental Health Association, but I came a long way to get there, and I was gonna speak about what my position is and what I do, because I manage the Kia House. However, I think what I just heard very well stated that. But I did want to speak a little bit about my past, and those who have known me, or maybe you don't know me, I speak in legislation, and I, and I'm several, part of several groups that advocate for the rights of individuals that've been in corrections, coming out, that are, are in corrections still, because I've been in corrections, and it was within there that I met guys who were changing their life and had changed my life, and I believe it was because of that humane effect, that changed that whole dynamic. And so, it really sucks that I know there's guys that are in these houses, probably scared that what we're doing may put them on the street, or tell, like, parole or probation, like, if you don't have a place to stay, maybe we stick you back in there, which I've heard of happening and seen happen before. And that's not what we're doing. But what we are doing is, one, the double-bunking, just that alone, he can pay for other houses. He can pay for other houses, so he doesn't have to double-bunk, and he can keep all the people. Why is, why is there such a desperate need to stack people up 12? When you're a family, you have concern about safety and what issues, but your money's short, you gotta stack people up. The concern is there. Nobody's cutting corners, nobody's, they're, they're doing what they have to do. This is a business operating under the guise of something trying to be otherwise. I'm not against for-profit. But when you start dealing with the human dynamic, they need to do more. And what's being asked here is not a big hurdle. Fire marshal comes, he tells you what's wrong. You need to address this, you got 30 days. You address it. There's a neighborhood that's concerned, you go to their, their meetings. If they're being unreasonable, you challenge them, but you can come together with them. All our houses are in neighborhoods that we're a part of Neighborhood Association. I will go to Indian Villages Neighborhood Association Annual Meeting tomorrow and have great reactions with them. Or maybe I have arguments, but I won't stop being a neighbor. So nothing that's being asked of Michael here is unreasonable. So I don't understand, and I asked Michael before, he's welcome to come to the organization and consult with us of how we did what we did and what he could do different. And so what we're asking of you is, people won't do that if somebody doesn't stop the unreasonableness, where I'm gonna, I'm gonna run this business that I'm not living in, that I'm not stacked in, but I'm gonna run it in a way that I'm gonna just make a bunch of money, and not really be able to justify that other than the same things that we are getting people all the time. Bridges of Hope will get you clothing and will furnish your apartment for free, just so you know, for free. But they'll- But they'll tell you they're paying money for it. We have resources. We can work with you, Michael, so I want you to know that. I told you, we can work for you. But we need you to say, hey, no more of this, because this is gonna get out, out of control, 'cause I think of my past life and I, I look here and I think, this is better than my illegal hustle. I can stack bodies like slave ships and make money. As opposed, give everybody a room, give them dignity. We wanna work as a community, as was said and is true. There is more than enough need that a hundred people can hope in a hundred houses and we have need for that. And it can extend beyond corrections and whatnot. We have that need. You guys all know these numbers. So, we're asking to look at, this is not unreasonable request. This is not in opposition of those who are going to the houses and unconcerned about what might happen to them, but it is concern of what could happen.
One minute.
If there's a fire in that house and there's no real secure way to get out, because we got to cut corners. And the guy's just talking to his lawyer about how we can get, make sure our insurance got us and we don't suffer no losses, as opposed of the real losses of people who put their families in that situation, 'cause they don't really have a choice. No, no business should operate under the guise of a family, because that argument is not that the brothers can't become family, the sisters can't become family, but it's not that you're concerned about your family, the business person. And that's what's happening here, is these, these people are coming in as businesses trying to get under this, this window and that, that's just not, that's, we know better. So, that's all I'm asking is, we think about this reasonably. We, we talked about the businesses, nonprofit or profit, that do this reasonably, and then we come to our decision, as opposed to just, how can you get in? And why, you know, we don't wanna do something wrong here. Wrong is, wrong is authorizing this and not asking the person that you need to meet these standards. Low standards. Safety. Humanness. Low standards. We all should have that in the first place.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason. Um, Councilman Beckus.
Thank you for coming down and testifying today. I appreciate it. Folks living together who are going through a similar experience together, um, may be able to form bonds, I would suppose.
Yes.
Through that experience. At what point does that bond become something that is notable in your mind? And at what point does that bond, is that bond not relevant to you?
I think the bond's always relevant. It can come, it can come fast, but it's tested over time, because we're all in a situation. But as soon as that, I've seen, I've had bonds with guys inside and I've done it quite a bit of time, and they was like, doing great. And I come out and I'm like, what are you on? Because it gets tested in different levels here. The bond of thirty, or, 'cause what's happening here, what's happening after thirty days? What's happening after sixty days? Is this extending out? You know what I mean? Is the assistance, because we're trying to succeed out there. And when I come to a problem, I want somebody that I've been working with or that's getting funds out of me, saying they're working with me, to still be a supporting system. To be arbitrary, or not arbitrary, but a, a in-between, like if me and my parole officer have a problem, maybe they come in and they have genuine things as opposed to just rhetoric of what going, because everybody's involved in this. That's how community works. Everybody's involved. So, yes, the bond can last for a long time, but we're all, when we come out, we are all struggling. And the simple fact is, felony, as was said, can deny you of just about anything for any reason. And so, it's really hard to hold each other up when I'm constantly feeling like I'm just struggling and I'm struggling and I'm struggling. And that's what these support systems can come in and tell we can really get our feet, as I have. I'm talking about being employed. I've been employed for six, seven years, since I've been out. But I haven't did what I did without support. And I have bonds that have lasted, but that extra support is, is the difference. I like what I think Michael wants to do, but I don't like what I see him doing.
And is there a, you don't like what you see that he's doing. Is there a, a level of service that you feel like? Where's that threshold in terms of where you would like to see him be?
I think that threshold has been determined by organizations, since MHA, as Casey had spoken of, that been existed. They've been, the Mental Health Association's been doing this for numerous of years. It's just became a public awareness that, hey, this is not just something that we just kinda tolerate over here. This is a need. And then need other organizations started doing it, and then individuals started popping up and doing it differently and packing people in. Oxford House, although I disagree with the double stacking, is deliberately for a purpose of sober living. This house sounds like everybody's with a disability. It sounds like, I don't know what's going on there, but, uh, it sounds like we're putting a couple of standards in place so we can justify to you guys like how much we need this. We need housing. But who's ever supported unsafe housing, especially when it's a business, what, no matter what guys they come in? It's not, it's not somebody coming and taking care of their grandkids and their grandkids' friends and whatnot. It's a business. So, the threshold is there. Their, their legislation's talking about it. This is transitional living, no matter how they phrase it. This is transitional living. The threshold, you know, you can go speak with the, I, I don't wanna be the expert on that. I'm just saying, you should, we should pull them thresholds from organizations that got five or more years in and been through the ups and downs and start adjusting the measures. And the measures are continuously being adjusted, but they have a track record. UNO does, uh, research on it. So, there's backing on what's happening here. So, the threshold is there. So, if you want more specifics, I, I would refer you to that.
No, I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Thank you, Jason, very much. Next testifier, please. Could we see a show of hands of remaining people who would like to testify? All right. Okay, thank you very much. There is, uh, the other station if, who would like to testify next, if you could come forward and sign in and looking, um, stay prepared. Thank you. All right, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, just like to pass first, before I begin my testimony here, I have two letters, uh, from neighbors in the neighborhood. One of them is a clinical psychologist who is addressing the issues, reference care for, uh, for people with addictions and recovery. And these are the two letters. Also, I'm gonna give to you, excuse me here, I'm gonna give to you my chronological order of incidents that's occurred at the Michael House. Also, I'm gonna give you my testimony on the Michael House on February twenty, no, no, excuse, that's, this is my February twenty-seventh testimony. And then also, the parole board testimony that I did for transparency, again. First of all, my name is Dean Cole and I live at twenty-six forty-four Washington Street. For transparency with you folks, I wasn't gonna put this in my, in my, uh, presentation you, and I just want to make clear, I am the gentleman that appeared before the parole board. I hope this doesn't affect my transparency and my time, just to make some clarity.
Not at all.
Okay. My name is Dean Cole and, like I said, I appeared before the parole board on Wednesday. There was a public notice in the paper, I noticed about the meeting of the parole board. So, I contacted the parole board two days before the meeting, talked to Ms. Cotton, Chairman of the parole board, and asked if I qualified the beyond the agenda reference the Michael House at twenty-six forty-eight Washington Street. At that time, she said, yes, by all means, we'd like to have you come before and speak on the Michael House. For transparency too, you can see my testimony that I have. At that time, they gave me an hour and a half to discuss what was going on at that meeting. Everything that what I told them, I shared with them, the problems that was going on, all the documentation that I had. Also, they asked questions too of what was going on in the house. I cleared all of that out, which was then documented too, that I gave to Mickey Kilpatrick, who happens to be the parole officer for southeast area, and then also Jordan Wall, and then also the Michael House associates that works for, for the Michael House, that the complaints, then they know that I've had complaints and they know me by my first name. And, because this has been going on since July. At that parole meeting, when I gave my presentation, there was discussion, and then at that time, they said to me that they, out of, and they gave me no reason, but they said residents at twenty-six forty-eight Washington who are on parole, who they're responsible for, would be removed from the house the next day. People were removed, all of them that I know that was living in there, which apparently all of them were parole, were removed, starting on the twenty-fourth, and all of them got out on Sat, on Saturday of, you know, wouldn't be that the twenty-sixth. One of the stressing things about that, when they were moved, there was no one from parole there assisting these people to get transported to where they needed to go. And there was no one from the Michael House there either helping these people to get moved. Two other gentlemen had cars removing some of them, some of their families come, some of their friends come, and then another gentleman, who I've known personally at the Michael House, he used his vehicle to move people. So, what was the decision by the parole board, only they can answer that. But everything that I said to them is in my testimony, every documentation that I give them and I'm giving you, I provided here, gonna have to make copies of that, 'cause I wasn't expecting this. So, anyway, that, that decision was made, and again, they use confidentiality, wouldn't give me an explanation or anything on why they made the decision to remove these people. So, any questions, reference that.
Questions for Mr. Cole at this point? Okay. Not yet, okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman Washington.
Madam Chair, and, and city clerk, could we get those copies? Could you hand them to our executive assistant and we can get? I'd like to just know if we can get copies.
Sure, thank you. Okay.
All right.
I will continue. Thank you, Councilman Cho. Good point.
Again, like I said, my name is Dean Cole. Cindy and I live at twenty-six forty-four Washington Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. We've lived in this residence for over thirty-three years. The house that Mr. Carrato and Mr. Watson described is not the same house I live next to. Our home, our home is located right next to the house, the Michael House at twenty-six forty-eight Washington Street, owned by Michael Carrato of Omaha. During the thirty-three years of living next to that home located at twenty-six forty-eight Washington, now called the Michael House, I've had nothing but a positive experience living next door to four different families who occupied the house until Mr. Carrato purchased the house and made it into a profit transitional home for individuals released from corrections and dealing with alcohol and drug abuse. Washington Street is a close-knit neighborhood. We celebrate weddings, anniversaries and neighborhood gatherings. We have experienced health issues and deaths and allowing, and our fellow neighbors and have supported each other. I come here today not to complain about the current residents or clients who pay seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to rent a space and sleep at this business owned by Michael Carrato. I come here to make you aware that this is what is going on in this business and how the city, residents, clients and Washington Street neighborhood have been taken advantage of since Mr. Carrato purchased this property in June twenty twenty-two and turned it into a transitional home for profit. Mr. Carrato and his attorney referred to a venture as a unique experiment. I firsthand experienced to tell you, this is, this, this unique experiment is not working. I would be negligible if I would not ask to come before you and make you aware of what's some of the serious issues going on in the Michael House. I've just, I live just four feet away from this house. I'm retired and I observe a lot that goes on there. I know, I nor have the time to go into detail the number of issues that have occurred at the Michael House since Mr. Carrato purchased it. But I did provide you that doc, written documentation that I have given to, to the Michael House, I mean, not to the Michael House, but complaints I've made to the Michael House and then also to corrections. I've made personal contact with Mickey Kilpatrick and Jordan Wall with the State Patrol, plus Michael Carrano and his associates to address what I consider serious incidents that have occurred at this house since July twenty twenty-two. I've called them so much, I no longer have to introduce myself. I also met with the Lincoln Lancaster County Zoning Board and the Nebraska Pro Board to address these issues. Since July of twenty twenty-two, I've made it a point to introduce myself to residents willing to meet and welcome them to the neighborhood. I've personally got to know eight residents by their first name and I've heard some of their sad stories dealing with recovery and their concerns they are not getting help from the Michael House or parole.
One minute.
Cindy and I, can I have an extension on that? 'Cause with, when I, clarification? Okay, 'cause it'll be short here. Cindy and I helped one resident move into a new location because he was misplaced at twenty-six forty-eight Washington Street and he had two hours to get to a new location. He had no transportation to move him and his items, plus there was no one available from state parole or Michael House to assist him. I've assisted three clients who were placed at the Michael House by parole with no assistance or direction from parole or the Michael House to do what they should do when they moved into the house. Two, two of them had used my cellphone and getting, and getting in contact with someone on directions of what to do, since they had no way to communicate with parole or the Michael House representatives. One had to sit in the cold and the other in the heat, waiting for assistance. I have taken a client to the bank to make an emergency deposit, have provided food and cooking utensils for residents because none was available at the house. I, five residents and clients have expressed their concerns, referenced lack of supervision at the house, to assure they do not relapse, plus assist them dealing with fellow residents who are dealing with issues of recovery and lack of supervision. All five said they did not dare complain to parole or Michael House staff, because they did not trust them and were fearful if they complained, they would go to a prison. I have personally observed a gentleman on a bicycle twice throw a small pack and into the bushes and retrieve, and retrieved by two clients on separate occasions, who are later arrested and cuffed and removed from the house after I reported it. I observed two residents having an emotional breakdown and no professional care to help them, except a fellow client who was impacted by those events personally himself. I have recovered two knives thrown on, on my garage roof after an altercation at the house. I've been confronted twice by clients with anger issues, once when I asked individuals to move his car, blocking my drive, and they were blaming me for the residents having to move from twenty-six forty-eight Washington. I'm proud of the fact that these residents' clients moved out of their home, sorry, I'm proud of the fact, when three residents' clients moved out of the home, they took the time to look me up and say thank you and, and goodbye. There were two of the residents who purchased a gift for Cindy and I, thanking us for our support. One resident cleaned our walks after the first snow last month. I cannot express enough how Mr. Carrato's taken advantage of these clients, the state, the city and residents of Lincoln. He has usurped the system with his cavalier and entitled attitude by not caring for his clients and followed the legal process of establishing a Michael House in Lincoln. I'm also disappointed that the state parole, who entrusts these clients' care through the Michael House, has not been very supportive either of them and the process, or made aware that what was going on in this house for seven months and it did not have the proper permit to operate, but patrol and I notified them, said this house has been operating illegal. But the parole board said that they were told by Michael that he was operating legal. That's when I told them, you need to check this out. Trust in God, lock your car. This is not true. When I asked the parole, they were, why they were sending, like I said, when I asked the parole, why they were sending people to the house, they said that Mr. Carrato said that they were running an illegal house. Uh, I met with the, like I said, I met with the parole board on the twenty-third to bring their attention the serious issues going on in the house. And I was informed at the meeting that the residents would be removed from the twenty-six forty-eight Washington House on February twenty-fourth. One other thing, when Mr. Carrado, when they first went into this house, we were told as neighbors that it was gonna be a brother and sister living in that house. Cindy and I went over the day that we seen Mr. Carrado and Julie, one of his associates, at the house. We went over and introduced ourselves and said, we will be more than happy to take the, the students around and visit and meet people, 'cause this is a close neighborhood. We support, we're a diverse and good neighborhood. He did not, nor Julie, have the courage to tell us, this is gonna be, they're not students living here, they're none of our relatives, but it's gonna be a transitional house. It has started off bad that way by him misleading people and he continually has, and he has not provided support to people that need support. I have been there now, have dealt with this since July. I've got to know eight of these people, four of them especially, that have been, not that process of friend yet, but yet they have confided in me and have talked to me, and it is unfair what's going on and what kinda house that he's operating there. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Are there questions for Mr. Cole from the council?
Oh, one other quick thing, if there's, there is a real need for some sort of advisory thing or communications, again, with parole and probation. And we all know the difference between parole and probation, of course. But parole doesn't talk to probation. And another thing, the residents that were moved out of the house must've been all parole, because there's nobody in that house at twenty-six forty-eight Washington as I speak. So, all of them were part of parole. And what, again, what reason they used to remove them, I have no idea. And they moved them out fast, let me tell you.
Thank you very much. Was there one other person who signed in? And after this testimony, we will take, we're at the two-hour mark, so we will take a ten-minute break after your testimony. Thank you.
Hi, I'm James Wallace. I'm another neighbor, uh, right next to the Michael House at twenty-six forty-eight. And, um, a lot of things have been touched on since we listened to an hour and a half of their, uh, information about it. But I, I did wanna say that I am glad that the people from MHA brought up, uh, the issues of the for-profit aspect of this business. And I think it does matter, even though- And I think it does matter, even though the attorney said like, oh, some people get hung up on that, and, you know, oh, we don't care about that. I care about it. This is about making money, it is not about helping these people. I think that the MHA people and things that Dean has said have, you know, made that pretty clear. But, you know, it's, nothing about this is as it's being presented by Mr. Carrato. And I, I mean, I can give you examples, but it's not, you know, I'm, I come, I work a schedule where I'm on call, I come home in the middle of the night sometimes, I work in transportation, work for the railroad. I come home, there's people out there at 3:00 in the morning, there's people out there at 5:00 in the morning. I mean, it's, it's not in any way how it's being presented. And I, and I think that if we're going to be honest about it, again, with a for-profit issue, that is what it's really all about. He has found a novel way of packing a bunch of people into a house that would not be allowed under Section 8 or any other kinds of, you know, under this statute that we have for the city of Lincoln. And he's asking for, you know, this special accommodation, as the, the attorney was asking for at the beginning, all on the basis of like some idea of family that's going to last for 30, 60, 90 days. And when there are those sorts of facilities that exist, but there's also no kind of requirement for any sort of therapy, and then there were kind of, well, is there therapy, is there not therapy, you know, all that? Because it is a novel way of packing a bunch of people in and bringing in a huge amount of rent revenue, which is the beginning and end of what it's all about. And I would wager, you know, also, that in Omaha, these, these people that are being put in his houses there serve as a labor supply for his business. Because he'd mentioned CDLs and all these sorts of things and whatever, and that's speculative, but I think, you know, there's probably something there. But I guess, you know, I, then the final thing I wanted to touch on was, you know, I lived there, stepdaughter was hit on by two men that were, as she was walking by on the sidewalk, and, you know, she doesn't feel safe there. And I guess the final thing I want to wrap up with is that there was a lot of talk, and I understand there's a lot of concern over the people who are living there, and I care about that too. And I think part of the problem with this is that this is all being framed as, oh, this is a bunch of, you know, this is a just cause that does matter, and these are people who, you know, have, have struggles in life and need another chance versus a bunch of nimbies. And I, I'm here to tell you that's not what is going on here. You know, kids don't feel safe living right next door, you know, and that's, that's the bottom line. So, any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions? Comments? All right. Thank you again. We will take a, a short break and reconvene at, reconvene at 7:50, that 10 till 8:00. So, we are recessed until that time.
The City Council is, will reconvene. Madam Clerk has an announcement, so we can proceed, please.
Those of you that are still here to testify on item 5A, some may have already come to sign ahead of time, we appreciate that. So when you do come to testify at the microphone, please just remember to state your name and your address and the item that you're testifying for. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Whitlock. I live next door to the Michael House. I am 15 years old, and during the beginning of fall, I was approached by two men and basically catcalled and gotten looks. And I was 14 at the time. I, when I walk past that house, I get very nervous and almost run to my house because I am so scared to be near it. There have been times I have woken up between 1:00 in the morning and 5:00, where there have been random people just running out of the house screaming down the streets at other people. And there have been people who have, have been really loud on the phone, too. They, like, really loud. And there have been times where I've walked up to my room and I've been able to smell weed coming from outside. And I don't feel safe. And I, I, I don't, I don't feel safe walking in the neighborhood. I have to walk around if I want to go to my house, if I'm going from Washington. I do not feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Are there any questions, comments? All right. Thank you. Next testifier, please. Or do we need to have you call them, Madam Clerk? Okay. Come on, Rosalina.
Thank you, dear one. I am Rosina. I'm at Peolino, 1850 Dakota Street. I'm going to be really vulnerable here. I work with women who have substance abuse. I will share with you that a person that has six months of sobriety on anything barely has their brains about them, right? I mean, like, seriously, we're just starting to think clear. I say this from personal experience. I love alcohol. That is my switch. We've talked about it. It is. It's my switch. It took me five times to get the amount of not drinking I have today, but that is today, and I don't count on tomorrow. So when I hear that we're relying on people, which is different than what I heard from Kia, which is, we rely on programs, because anybody who's been around the program a while knows that we rely on the steps. And number one's the biggest one. What do I have control over? What comes out of my mouth? What do I ask myself in the morning? Am I honest with myself? I can't answer yes to that all the time. None of us can, really. But those are the deep discussions I have when I go into the Independence Center. And we do therapy? No, we share experience. Are you trying a different path? What resources do you have? Can I share resources with you? I'll tell you what they share with me. If I don't have the structure I had at the IC, I'm sorry, the Independence Center, or whatever program, and I walk into unstructure, it doesn't go well. Because you are so structured at IC that literally every minute is accounted for. So one of the things we talk about is, what's your first meeting? Okay? Because those who don't go to a meeting the day they get out of rehab don't tend to make it very long. And they certainly don't make it six months. So the questions I would be asking with the ordinance would be things like, what is the length of stay at Oxford House? This is just what people share with me. Some of them, three years. And they are the conduits of the accountability that is required within a house. What is a good number to mix in with the residents? About three or four? Because the idea is to blend into a residential neighborhood, not anyway. So those are the questions I would ask. For me, eight months was my number. I tell you, I went back to drinking one day before eight months. Seriously, five times. Okay? So when I hear six months, is a, is the length of time for a manager? Like, phew, maybe that's not, like...
One minute?
What, um, what questions do you have for me? Because, oh, the, um, real quickly, ism, disease, disability, not functional, not able to work. That's, that's where I'm going with what is a disability and what requires a, but that's just a question, because I don't know. Is a disease of the ism, alcoholism, drug addiction, whatever ism it is, is that a disease? Or is that a disability that requires an AD, a compliance? Um, program, person, level, oh, an average, and then, yes. Okay. What questions do you have? And, thank you.
Thank you, Rosina. Any questions? Thank you very much.
I hope it's helpful. It's, it is literally the, I see them when they're in treatment, and then I see them when they're out. And this is what the women share with me. And the women, what they really need is the resources, I know that, that you were working on, James Michael Bauer. We need prenatal, we need maternal health, we need breastfeeding initiatives. I am still wearing my people hat. I'm still Rosina, not my job. But those are the services we need. And then transportation. Thank you, Cindy and Dean. The service they provided within their community, that,
Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name's Anissa Broman, and I have lived at 2637 Washington Street for over 30 years. I'm here to oppose a reasonable accommodation at 2648 Washington Street, or what Mr. Carrato and his attorney have liked to call in the past "The Great Experiment." I think when the parole board pulled all the parolees out of the house last week, it shows the experiment has failed. This house is not designed to accommodate 12 adult male parolees comfortably. It is a four-bed, two-bath house. This is much different than children sharing a bedroom. Mr. Carrato wants to put 10 adult men on second floor and four bedrooms and a sunroom, which is only five feet from 27th Street. Then during the summer, there is only air conditioning in two of the bedrooms. But Mr. Carrato insists they are totally fine with not having air. There is also zero parking for the parolees, their friends, relatives, house manager, and Michael's house employees. Mr. Carr stated before that with three days, they want the parolees to get a driver's license, and with that comes getting a car, which makes them self-sufficient. This means that they will need to use all street parking just for this one house. All Michael Howzers are supposed to have a house manager, and there has very seldom been one at this house. In the last 30 days, they have been without one manager for several days. And to be a house manager, as he stated before, you must not have had police interaction for the last six months. A background check is performed. However, they do not care what they hold on their criminal record. They work daily with individuals who have criminal records and are willing to accept any criminal charges as long as it's been longer than six months ago. According to me, Mr. Carrato has the parolees running this house. In the past seven months, we have seen parolees handcuffed and taken out of the house, drugs being tossed in the yard by a gentleman riding on a bike, men dropping, dropped off with their bags, and no one there to help them, women leaving after midnight and in predawn hours, drinking in front of the homes and tossing the little shooter liquor bottles all over our yards. But the best one of all, and I'm sure Mr. Carrato is excited that I'm going to bring this up once again, was at 10:15 at night, I go out my front door, and there's a gentleman having sex in the car in the front of my house. I yelled at him and asked him, "Are you seriously having sex in, in the front of my house?" He gave me a thumbs up and just kept going. When I contacted the Michael's house, Julie told me I should feel better, because there's actually two gentlemen that had sex in front of my house that night, and they were both kicked out of the house. That was supposed to make me better. Had I not stopped it, how many more would have had sex in front of my house that night? Because of the Michael's house, my once quiet, safe street now is a home with drug deals, sex in the public, and all-around chaos. Mr. Carrato and his attorney want you to believe this happens in everybody's neighborhood, but does it happen in any of yours? According to Mr. Carrato's attorney in a previous testimony in June, he quotes, "I treat us like we are the most annoying neighbor that has ever moved in." That is what he stated at the planning for the other two homes. An annoying neighbor. They know that what they're going to do, and we're supposed to be the ones that have to live with it. I would like to ask Mr. Carrato's attorney how this would be accepted in their neighborhoods. I can almost guarantee you, it would not. I'm struggling mentally with what is happening each and every day across the street. This house has truly affected my quality of life in the past seven months. I now live in a house that I don't want anyone to come and visit, and I'm afraid what will, they will witness. Last week, when the parolees removed from the house, one of them went over to Mr. Cole's house, and there he told him that we will have hell to be paid. This house has removed all safety I have felt on the street for the 30 years. That night that I found that out, my husband's out of town. I had lights on, I had doors locked, I had things in front of my door, because I didn't know what the hell that we would have to pay for having them removed, because it was our fault. Not Mr. Carrato and his setup, but it was our fault that they were getting removed from that house. The only person that is benefiting from the Michael's house is Mr. Carrato himself. He charges parolees $750 each month. He collects the money, deposits it in account, and then he goes to his home, a $1.1 million house on a lake with a pool. This is just a business to him. He has Michael's houses in Omaha right now, and don't think he doesn't plan to have as many in Lincoln as well. He has a cancer in Lincoln, and if you don't find a cure, it will just spread. He thinks all he needs is four bedrooms and two baths, and he can adult, he can house 12 adult parolees. I'm assuming most of the homes in your neighborhood would work for a Michael's house. And have you gone to Omaha and looked at any of his houses? My husband and I have driven by every single one of those. Seven of the nine, I locked the door and my husband got out, because there was no way I was getting out in the neighborhood. And is that something that we want here in Lincoln, spreading? But that's what he is spreading on our quiet street. Just don't allow Michael Carrato and his so-called experiment to continue on our street. But don't let this happen to any other street in Lincoln. This is a cancer that will spread throughout Lincoln and just won't stay in our neighborhood. Mr. Carrato's attorney has previously, that they are, are that annoying neighbor, they now know what they're going to, what isn't right, and they're going to continue doing it. Because once you approve it, he has nothing holding him back.
Time.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Broman. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please. Anyone else? Please come forward.
My name is Jason Scold. I live at 2627 Washington Street. Lived there with my family since 1998. It's about in the middle of the block that we're talking about here. I submitted comments through the council packet already, basically dealing with the code aspect of this and them being in violation with that code. I'll come back to that. I also submitted aspects of the Fair Housing Act that I never thought I would need to read, given what's happening here. I've read more about this than I've wanted to, but I, I just don't see where there's, there has to be this feeling that the council has to approve this. Same for zoning. That's not my read of the Fair Housing Act. Completely within your right to deny this. You've got ordinances that you don't need to make a fourfold increase to accommodate. That seems like a fundamental alteration to what the city has established. Also, there's a number of other houses, group homes, transitional housings, whatever they may be, within the radius that the city has outlined as well, that would exclude this happening again in this place. So we have things established by the city, and they aren't conforming with it. And the code aspect, I heard a gentleman say before, "We know better." I, I honestly think your applicant knew better that they needed to come get a reasonable accommodation before they started housing people in this house. And we talk about, the Fair Housing Act talks about an undue burden. That undue burden now completely falls on this neighborhood if you would approve this reasonable accommodation for 12 people. Because I see it, this is an unlicensed facility that seems to be 100% parolees, where there's no inspection by the city, state, anything that comes in to see how this is going. We would all know how this is going by the neighbors that are telling you how this is going. And it's not going well to date. And I honestly believe we wouldn't be here today if they would have stuck to the code. We're simp, as a neighborhood, I think we're sympathetic to these needs, as you heard people say. But the number 12 and what they've done to date is not reasonable. So I'm here to ask you to deny this application. Keep what you've got. Keep it to three unrelated people. Keep the spacing between other houses. That makes sense. I don't see where that cannot happen in this case and other cases in the city. So I think that's it, unless there's questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Thank you. Next testifier, please.
My name is Cindy Rutan, and I live at 2644 Washington, right next door to the Michael House. Dean and I have lived in our home since December of 1989. We know all of our neighbors. We've participated in the life events of all those living around us. We help each other and offer support when needed. We care for our neighbors. And we've treated the clients staying next door at the Michael House with that same respect. We've offered them numerous times to use our drive, because that's all that separates these two homes. We've shared food and treats. We've loaned tools and utensils and provided transportation to those requesting it. After this house next door was sold last year, we were told an Omaha couple bought it for their kids to live in while they attended school in Lincoln. Dean and I introduced ourselves the day that Michael Carrato and Julie took possession of that house. They were, we were misled with the intent of that house from that meeting also. They missed their opportunity to tell us what was in store for this house and what they had planned. There was no introduction of this new business into our neighborhood, which is specifically zoned for single-family residents. We don't even have any rentals in our area. The lack of transparency was a point brought up in the June 22 Walker Street property request by Mr. Carrato as something he would improve, improve on, and yet he did nothing to fix this. We did not get a notice about the purpose of this house until a new person was working with the clients there, and it was from complaints from us that she finally made this letter happen. But that was why we got this letter, and I'm sorry, I don't know the date, there was no date on that letter that he gave to you, but it was a long time coming, and it was because of complaints from us. And to give you an idea how close our houses are, we have a driveway and a sidewalk, that's all. We share a common wall with our garages, and there's really no space there. And we have people, men, coming up and down the drive all hours of the day and night. We don't even know if they belong there or not. It's a very unsettling feeling. And there are a lot of them. There are new people every week that come in and out, and it has actually changed the neighborhood immensely. And the establishment of this business next door has changed the neighborhood, and it is a close neighborhood. We've invested in our homes to make it a better place, and the Michael House wasn't even taking care of their lawn. They didn't even realize that the lot to the north was theirs and that they were responsible for maintaining it. They've had and continue to have many ongoing problems, which, yes, we see. We're right next door 24/7. We live there. We are probably the most on-pulse that anybody is. And yes, we've documented it and presented these things to the Planning Commission. Dean has documented everything and talked with parole many times. But the other things that are very bothersome are the traffic congestion. They say they don't have cars, but they have a lot of pickup and drop-off. There is no legal parking directly in front of the house. It's a busy intersection. It's very dangerous.
One minute?
And it's even bad with the fewer occupants than what they're asking for, for this location. And they've been operating for six months without proper zoning. They didn't even have safety inspections in place until the neighbors complained. They brought it to the attention of the city and the planning people. And I find it so ironic and inappropriate that this for-profit business, clearly not following the statutory process, is guiding its clients coming from incarceration to follow the rules and do the right thing, where they haven't even done it. And there is very much a lack of supervision in the house. There have been so many different so-called managers in there. I don't even know who they are. They never make themselves known. It's very hard to even know who a contact person is. You even ask the people that are living there, they don't know. They don't know who their supervisors are. So I just want to strongly suggest you oppose this. It is not making good accommodations for these people. I think the, the neighborhood has a lot to offer these people in recovery and transition, but at that number, I don't think it will happen. And I don't think they get the care and respect that they deserve. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions or comments?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Next testifier, please. We have two stations. If the person following this gentleman would like to come forward and sign in, that would be helpful.
I'll just go ahead and sign in after I'm done.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Ward. I live at 26...
Hi, my name is Tom Ward. I live at 2624 Washington Street. I'm here to talk about against the proposal. Before, just remember that the Michael's House are twisting the law. They're hiding behind the Fair Housing Act, HIPAA, and the ADA to meet their agenda. They claim that they are all a family. All the clients are disabled due to dependency, and therefore they have the right to disregard all zoning laws. The claim they are a family is stated pretty loosely. Here in Lincoln, we are covered by services from Region 5, Omaha by Region 6. Region 5 does not list Michael House as a provider, but Region 6 does. And in their eligibility requirements, it says a person must have a drug history at some point in their lifetime. And I'm sure the Michael House is operating under that assumption here in Lincoln, but that's not quite true. Because according to the U.S. Department of Justice, casual drug use is not a liability, not a disability. A person claiming a disability due to dependence has to demonstrate how they are disabled. In addition, I'm sure you'll find this interesting, and certainly the State Patrol, I'm sorry, the State Parole Board will find it very interesting, said during the hearings, on the Walker Street hearings, Mr. Carrato said that many of his clients are persons convicted of distribution of a controlled substance. This is not a disability. According to the U.S. Department of Justice, under the FHA, which they like to hide behind, current users of illegal controlled substances, persons convicted for illegal manufacture or distribution of controlled substance, sex offenders and juvenile offenders are not considered disabled under the Fair Housing Act by virtue of that status. So, by that, Michael, the Michael House now has to start doing some evictions because they can't claim the disability now. During the Planning Commission hearing, Mr. Watson, when asked about people relapsing, hid behind HIPAA and ADA saying, "Well, when does recovery begin?" And you can't ask and they don't have to tell. However, City Attorney Abby Latrell had, during the meeting, said that the courts have said that cities can ask for documentation for each resident. And so, I would encourage you to do that for all the Michael Houses here in Lincoln, just to ensure that they are following the law and what is required. For this zoning change, Michael House has to demonstrate why they need to have the zoning change. They need to have, they need to have to demonstrate why they want the change. The house at 2648 Washington is a four-bedroom, two-bath house with basically no parking. Mr. Carrato was asking that to be allowed to have 12 men in the residence. He claimed it's necessary because the more people inside has therapeutic value because they can all keep an eye on each other and keep everybody on the right track, remaining sober. What's the therapeutic value in a person fresh out of prison, four bedrooms, two to three people to a room, only two bathrooms, and no place to get away from all this overcrowding stress at $750 a month? And that only means rent utilities. For their food that they supply, they take them to the food pantry. They take them to where they can get free clothing. So, don't let them tell you, "Oh, we provide fried food." Maybe they provide ketchup or something. I don't know. But anyways. Julie Knight is the operations director at Michael House. And when she was asked during the Planning Commission, the therapeutic benefit of having 12 people in the, she was asked the therapeutic benefit for having 12 people if the clients aren't enforcing the rules. She said the clients are responsible for themselves and are there to support each other. She also said they didn't have to have 12 people all the time, but it was because of the need for people wanting to get out of prison to have a place to go. I guess there goes the therapeutic value of having 12. Mr. Watson was asked why 12 and not 6. He said it would not make this financially viable. Viable for who? Lack of money and more people to reduce the cost of rent is not a disability. They cannot use that lack of money. So, the real therapeutic value is from, is from Mr. Carrato's pocket. What the house here on Washington is, and I'm sure for other houses, is according to municipal code, is a transitional living facility, as you brought up. I did look up what that means, as I do in my due diligence. And it said it's a facility affiliated with an alternative to imprisonment program, including but not limited to diversion, pre-release, work release, parole, probationary or residential reentry programs, or more than three persons who are unrelated by blood, marriage, and adoption reside.
One minute.
All the clearance, all the clients who live at, or will live at Washington Street, come from prison and are out on parole, all of them. Michael House does not hide this fact. During the last Planning Commission hearing, Mr. Watson said the clients are referred to them by parole probation. Julie Knight said that people come to their house once approved by parole. In addition, they meet weekly with parole to discuss each house and each client. Jordan Wall, who is a parole officer who came into the meeting as a citizen, said that the house is for rehabilitation. And one client named Travis came to testify and he was there for the transition. Lived on Washington and First Street, and about half the clients that were there came in after him. Also, again, a reminder that Julie Knight said they did not have to need, they did not need 12 clients for the Washington House, but wanted it due to a need for housing coming out on parole. Mr. Watson said they encourage people to move out within nine months. From what we know and per municipal code, this is a transitional living facility. However, Mr. Carrato cannot have this designation either. Because if he does have this by law, he cannot have more than six people living in that residence. But there are other requirements that he does not want to meet. So, this is what it really is. It's a transitional thing. Do not get caught up with the talk of, do not get caught up on the talk that this is a family that Mr. Carrato would like to push. Do not get caught up in the veiled threats to sue, like Mr. Watson will talk of. Bottom line, what we know is, and what they have said, this is a transitional house. This is, it's not a family for disabilities where we all live together and support each other. This is transitional leaving by our city codes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I actually have a question.
Oh, yes. Councilwoman Washington.
Sorry, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Ward, you, thank you for your testimony. Thank you for coming down. You read through some Fair Housing exemptions and you, and I'd like you to read them one more time. It's probably a few pages back. You said the conviction of manufacturing or distribution of a controlled substance, conviction of a sexual offense. And what were the other ones?
It was current users of illegal controlled substances, substance, substance, yeah. Persons convicted for illegal manufacture or distribution of a controlled substance, sex offenders and juvenile offenders are not considered disabled under the law, under the Fair Housing Act by virtue of that status. And that came from the U.S. Department of Justice regarding FHA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next testifier, please. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariana Ward. I live at 2624 Washington Street with Tom.
There you go.
I will, this, English is my second language, so I'm going to ask for a couple extra minutes, if you don't mind. I would like to get through my notes and I would like to read them through because I, I come to you kind of twofold. One is a parent to two kids that live there, two teenagers. And the other one is, I would like to point at some inconsistencies in Mr. Carrato's and Mr. Watson's testimony from time to time as we move on. So, Tom and I were looking to buy a house together and withdrawn to this row of 100-plus-year-old houses back in 2004. Mrs. Margaret Keefe owned this house and we came and we looked and it was a beautiful home, but knowing that there is some of the crime going on around this area, a couple of blocks away from us, we were very hesitant to do that. We decided to buy the house and move into this neighborhood that has been a very well-maintained block by a longtime owner who cared about their neighbors. Tom said that this was one of the few places in the neighborhood that is just an oasis and it was beautiful and neighbors really cared about each other. We signed the papers. Right after that, he proposed to me on that same porch. And a couple of years later, I told him on that same porch that we're expecting a baby and another. Couple of years later, we were expecting another one. And after 19 years, we really accumulated not just a lot of memories, but friendships with the people that live on this block. We all watched the new generation grow up and grow away from their families. As many of us said, we celebrated birthdays and graduation, had many block parties. And we were there for each other during medical emergencies, passing of the loved ones, and taking care of the elderly that was left behind. And then another funeral. We're about to go into a wedding season, so we have a wedding coming up. And about these kids, I want you to know about them too because they do matter. I have two teenagers. I have a girl who is afraid to walk out right now and tells her brother, "Please walk fast and walk tall and get inside." Because she saw a couple of gentlemen standing down the street looking at them. The other kids that we have, one is obtaining a PhD in neuroscience at the Creighton. The other one is obtaining a master's degree at the Nova Southeastern University in Florida. The third one is getting a business degree at the University of Oregon. We have a guy that is at UNL getting his degree. And we have a new generation of graduating kids that are coming out of the high school, one wanting to be a doctor. We have two heck of athletes coming up, one that plays tennis. And our boy that plays baseball and football. And I will tell you that unless Coach Saban calls him in, he's going to the Naval Academy in Annapolis. These are our people. This is our family. This is our neighborhood. And I thought that was really important for you to understand because Mr. Watson shows or describes the family as a group of unrelated individuals with a common goal. Our goal is to get this neighborhood to be prosperous and continue on. So, on June 9, Mr. Carrato purchased this house when Mr. Rod died. And as you heard, that was in a false pretense that he's moving in his kids in. This is, we're talking about this very large house that are probably a middle-class family. And I came from somewhere else, so I'm going to use that as an example. You have immigrants and you have refugees that are coming into this area. They have these big houses. Maybe they have a lot of kids. They're taking care of the elderly because it's part of their culture. They would like to buy this house, but they're outbid by corporations like Mr. Carrato's. They can't afford to compete with him. So, the monthly mortgage for that house, I assume it's about the same as ours. We pay about $2,000 a month. But he charges $750 a person. That is $9,000 a month. So, they're paying for his, and these are people that came out of the correctional facilities. They don't have money and they're paying his bills. They need to think about that. This is not for their benefits. So, long story short, I would like to point out some of the things that Mr. Watson and Mr. Carrato said. Why they don't go in front of the Planning Commission or City Council. It's, I quote, or paraphrasing, "Because city tells us no first before we comply." Mr. Carrato added in his statement that only when the complaints came, they took required actions. And they don't have to permit, they don't have to have a permit, but they're doing it as a procedure. They also said, "We did not realize we were not compliant until the complaint was filed." But this is just a formality and you were going to prove it anyway, right? So, that is a lot of, in my personal opinion, arrogance and intimidation to anybody that they are in front of saying, "We're going to make a federal case out of this." What I would really, I know that we're running out of the time. There's a lot of statements that they did, that they made, and they're contradicting each other at every step. But I wanted you to look at this. One of the reasons why they tell us, they can't tell us who is in the house is to protect the client's privacy. This is from their own website, and I will pass this around. Each house has a virtual tour of the house. And I'm going to pass this one especially for you, and I want you to look at the names. This is a public information, okay? Not something that was, that was pulled by confidential people. But since they're names of the clients, did they post it on a Facebook? I went to the Nebraska Correctional, Department of Corrections, it actually is a public site. And I went to the Nebraska Sex Offender Registry, that is also a public site. And I want you to know that people that are listed on that, the two of them are Sex Offender Registry, which automatically disqualifies them FHA disability. And four of them were distributing drugs. So, they don't even disclose who they have in their house. But that is posted on the website and feel free, before they take you down, they might, because that is right there on their little video of the Walker House. Most of the other stuff, they pretty much told you. But I am going to just again say that FHA, users of illegal controlled substances, persons convicted for illegal manufacture or distributing of a controlled substance are not considered disabled under the Fair Housing Act and therefore do not have protected status. You also need to know that when Mr. Cole was, when he was threatened, that, and let me, I'm trying to skip through this. There is another thing that if there is a, the Fair Housing Act does not afford protection to individuals with or without disabilities who present a direct threat to the persons or property of others. And they were directly in his face threatening to him and the neighbors. So, I want you to consider that. And I want you to note, please, that neighbors are not against the sober living houses. We are not against the residents of the sober living houses, no matter what they tell you. Mr. Carrato has been allowed to take advantage of those that have very limited say and resources in their lives for his personal for benefit by falling through the cracks and loopholes of our system. I beg you not to give in to his threats of making a federal case. Call them accountable and make this count for something and put a stop on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Next testifier, please. Anyone else? Please come forward. Welcome.
Welcome. I'll sign in after the fact. My name's Eric Brown. I live at 4010 Normal Boulevard. I'm not a resident like these residents of Washington Street. I'm a resident. I'm a constituent. I believe of your district now, ma'am. And I think that their concerns are valid. I think that your constituents in the future are going to have concerns such as theirs. I think that you as council persons will have people that is going to say to you, not in my backyard, not in my backyard to transitional homes, not in my backyard to developmentally disabled homes next to me either. But I will point out that those at least would have supervision, those of which would have at least some type of state oversight. And also have a responsibility to deliver services to disabled people. These individuals here, the Michael Houses, the Oxford Houses, are going under the guise of reasonable accommodation for disability. That to me says an onus of, we're going to care for our clients because essentially they're clients living under that roof. The second you take payment in exchange for a service, are they not providing a service or are they just collecting rent? If they're just collecting rent, they shouldn't fall under the guise of fair housing and reasonable accommodation for those that are disabled. And if they're having individuals that are housed in those homes, that they're using the label of disabled, they have an onus, a responsibility, a civic responsibility, a, they should have something on their conscience that says, "We need to deliver services that meet their needs." Now, I'm no expert in mental health. I'm not any of that. I have a history. You know, I did go to Southeast Community College for human services in my past. I worked in a juvenile correctional facility in the past, working with adolescents and family. I know at least enough to know that individuals that end up in the penal system have mental health issues at their core. They didn't, they did not actually do a crime and be of sound mind. That's from a layman's standpoint. You'll forgive me, those who are in the mental health profession, if I'm wrong. Forgive me and those in the penal system, if I'm wrong. If you have prisoners in your, in your care and you say they're not mental health, they do not have mental issues, I apologize. Anyway, so, and/or if you want to talk about those that are in recovery and addiction. Again, I'm not a mental health specialist. I didn't deal with recovery. Or I have, you know, family members that are alcoholics. And I can tell you that my family members, they are self, what's the word? They're self-medicating. And they self-medicate by utilizing drugs and alcohol. So, are these individuals not self-medicating likewise? And do they not need mental health care that these people are failing to provide underneath their roof while saying, "We want reasonable accommodation to serve those that are disabled"? So, I think that, again, I'm not on Washington Street. I'm just a constituent. I'm a resident of the city of Lincoln. So, I want to feel like I represent other residents in other neighborhoods that would like to see more careful scrutiny of these types of homes going into our communities in the future. That they fall under the proper guidelines of disabled people and how they're cared for. We have a responsibility to care for our disabled individuals that live in our community. And if they're going to be labeled disabled.
One minute.
They have to, they have a right to receive proper services. And you can't just put them under a roof and say, "Let the community meet those needs." We're going to house them here because we know we have a housing problem and a housing shortage for our parolees. Well, you're right. You're not wrong. But you're going under the guise of the fact that they're disabled individuals and asking for reasonable accommodation in doing so. And you're failing the people that live under that roof. You're failing them. When they could get other, if they're disabled, they could get other appropriate housing accommodations and facilities. There are other ways to get those in-house. And they've been mentioned, either Hanu House, Independent Living, Independent Center, other places. So, that's my standpoint again. Again, I think the Washington people here are very representative, and they're caring individuals who voiced their opinion appropriately. But I also want the rest of the city and the rest of the community represented as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman McGinnis.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and ask to be excused from the rest of the hearing.
Yes, of course, of course. Thank you.
I just wanted to personally thank you, Mr. Brown, for taking time to come and address this. And since I am your representative, I wanted to do that personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next testifier.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Ron Truba. I live at 2616 Washington Street. I'm here to testify in opposition to the application before you. I'm not going to get into the financial aspect. Again, everyone can see that Mr. Carrados clearly exploiting vulnerable people to maximize profits at his rental house. The applicant's trying to compare himself, compare the residence, I'm sorry, to a family only when it is convenient. Why are they encouraging their family members to move out on such short notice? Why are they charging their family members rent? Why are they drug testing their family members? Do typical family members have sex outside of their house? And in that case, even if we couched that, some previous testimony, some teenagers could do that at some family, has it happened before? Certainly. This is not a family with some teenager or someone who does this on an isolated incident. This is a revolving door of people who have no vested interest in the neighborhood. I really want to focus my testimony today on the specific lot and the number of 12 individuals on this lot. Would this request place an undue financial or administrative burden on the city? Yes, for example, it was, it was testified here earlier that there were five calls from LPD to this location in this time period. Five calls, whether they turned out to be substantiated or not, are five calls for service in this time period. It is a revolving door of individuals, and it doesn't go away like a family that lives there where you address some items and then they clean up those items. It's new people all the time, and it's new calls for service all the time into perpetuity. The previous testimony that happened at the planning commission talked about large families when this house was built. 1920, approximately, the average household was 4.34 people. Today, the average household is 2.6 people. There are 15 houses on this block, so even in 1920, that would have been only 65 people on the block. If all of us turned our houses into the same scenario that is being applied for, that would be 180 people on this one block. I would encourage you to review the satellite and street views of this property. It is not suited for this occupancy. And when it was built, it had even more room than it does today. 27th Street was narrower, there was an alley that was in the back. It was not as close to the traffic that it is today. Will it create a fundamental change and an undue impact? Well, would the city allow construction of a 12-bedroom apartment building? Or a typical storefront business? This is the same type of impact and essentially creates a fundamental change. This is a narrow lot that's on the corner of one of the busiest arterials in Lincoln. It's not safe for backing parking. It has a dangerous corner with limited visibility. It places more burden on utilities, electrical, sewer, parking. Residents required to have jobs, as it was talked about earlier. 12 people that need transportation, whether they own their own cars or someone is picking them up. 12 people in this one 50-foot wide lot. Cars are parked at that blind corner. Cars are parked down the street at my house because there's not room. There's more cars and not enough space, this prohibits snow removal. It possibly limits access for large emergency vehicles. There is a greater demand for all emergency and other city services based on the increased density. On a larger scale, we need legislation, and some of you might be aware that Senator Mike McDonnell is establishing some, or proposing some legislation at the State Capitol to provide standards on operation and oversight. But on the immediate topic before you, this particular location is not well-suited for such a large number of people. This is a fundamental change to the intent of its current zoning and would place an undue burden on the city because of the characteristics of this particular lot.
One minute.
I have no further testimony. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Truba. Any questions, Ron? All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Any other testifiers on this issue? Anyone else? Please come forward. Thank you.
My name's Emily Kenter. I'm testifying in favor of, whatever that is.
Emily, would you mind signing in when you can?
Oh, I did over there.
Okay, great, thanks.
So I have a little bit of history in this little field. I have lived experience, and I have educational background. I'm actually a college graduate. My licensure is pending with the state right now to be a licensed drug and alcohol counselor. And I guess I just kind of want to touch base on, from experience and just being in the field, that there is therapeutic property in having this many people in a house. Not only is there accountability, support, and brotherhood, because you have to have accountability, the less people you have, the more secrets they're going to try to keep. In other treatment centers that I've worked in, they prefer, if people travel, to keep them in groups of three because at least one person's going to crack and end up saying something. So it's the more the merrier. There's strength in numbers. Also, it's helpful for people who are recovering to have like-minded people with them or people that they can relate to. There's also prevention of recidivism by having halfway houses. It teaches them independence. Some of these people are coming out of the Department of Corrections, so we're restoring their life skills that they need to be successful because they did have a strict schedule before that, right? They're not used to having this freedom. So the fact that they have other like-minded people with them, they're going to help teach them, guide them, mentor them. And group living mitigates the risk of relapse in recovery. It's proven. And we do also provide structure in our program. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Kinter. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you for coming down. It takes a lot of courage to speak in support after everyone's spoken in opposition. You said just a moment ago that there are benefits to halfway houses. Were you referring to the Michael House as a halfway house? Or were you speaking euphemistically? And then could you tell me what the structure is?
So I'm just, I guess I should have said sober living houses. I misspoke. I'm just talking about sober living houses. And when I talk about structure currently, my services are contracted. And we have classes. We take them to appointments, we help them get on their feet when they first come out. They are required to go to MRT if it's required of their plan, whatever plan of action that they have, which is a type of therapy. It's called moral recognition therapy.
So when you say that they're contracted, services contracted classes, with whom are the contracts? Can you be?
No, my, my services are contracted.
Oh, your services are contracted, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Bowers.
Thanks for coming out. I appreciate it. So you mentioned that you do have some educational experience and that your license is on pending. Are you provisional license, or are you?
Provisional.
Provisional license? Are you providing drug and alcohol services at the facility?
At this moment, no, because I do not have a license.
When you do get your?
I will be.
Provisional license? So you're going to be providing drug and alcohol counseling inside the facility?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay. And I assume that you have a supervisor all lined up and malpractice insurance and?
Yes.
Because I guess to me, I guess that almost seems facility-based at that point then. If you're providing services inside the home.
Well, I'm not as of right now.
Right.
There's still stuff that's in the works, but.
With your provisional drug and alcohol counselor, and then we had a, I believe, a psychologist that came up earlier, can you help kind of explain maybe the discrepancy between the two beliefs where some folks thought that it wasn't therapeutic? You're saying it is. Can you kind of help me understand why some other therapists or some other psychologists might say that it is therapeutic, whereas in your opinion, or in your, yeah, in your opinion as a provisional drug and alcohol counselor, why that discrepancy might exist?
So it's not just based off my educational opinion. It's lived experience. I've been in sober living houses, and it did work. It did have accountability. All the things that I've talked about that are proven, they do work.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name's Russell McCauley. I'm for the Michael's House, and I'm in support of it. I'm a full-time employee for JRK Apartment Managing. I'm a maternal father of 18 weeks. I'm a loving and kind person. I'm very honest. I'm also a two-time convicted felon. And as of right now, besides being a father, new father, and having full-time employment, I'm also a house manager at the Michael's House on 35th Street. If it wasn't for places like the Michael's House and also the Hanu House, Oxford House, all these transitional sober living halfway houses, three-quarter, whatever you want to call it. If it wasn't for one of these houses, I wouldn't be here standing in front of you today. First off is because I don't want to be 10 feet around this guy. That would be, that would be five years ago, before I went to prison. I changed my life. I will be sober. I plan on being sober November 11, 2023, for four years. I was sober yesterday. I'm sober today. I don't know if I'm going to be sober tomorrow, but I can tell you right now, I plan on it. If it wasn't for the community being involved, if it wasn't for reentry, if it wasn't for people like the Hanu House, people like reentry, people like, I didn't catch the gentleman's name, which is very noble, and thank you. You know, people like gentlemen and people who you know are there to help, people like Michael. You know, there's, that's 1% out of everybody in Nebraska. You got the Oxford House, 2%, Hanu House, 3%. How many other guys? You got four, so let's call it 1%. And 1% is how much? How much in prison is 1%? 18 million? I think it's 18 millions to house one person in prison for a year? Or 9 million? Something like that? It's huge, huge. You got four, you got four communities coming together trying to help one problem or one, one, one thing that can help a situation, and that's people. How are we gonna, how are we gonna help anybody? If we're sitting here being scapegoats and pointing the finger and saying, "Oh, it's this, it's this." You know, it's like, people, you know, if people are talking about being a community, how are you being, how are you being a community when you're being biased about a whole situation that really in the end is comforting and helping out people that you have no clue about? The, the ladder from getting out of prison to, from where I am right now is taking a lot of anger, emotions, energy, stress. I'm 37 years old. I got gray hair. I have no hair now. It's taken a lot out of me. And I know darn well it's taken a lot out of the residents that have felt this way around, you know, this, other houses, other people. But the focus that I think everybody needs to focus on is the positive impact that we're at least trying to do. You know, obviously in prison, you know, you get write-ups. Everybody's pointing the finger. They're looking at everything negative you're doing. Not until you get out, until you start seeing the parole board, do they start actively, actually looking at the positive things that you're doing. Guys don't get into the Michael's House or Hanu House because they're still committing actions that are going to get them to steal your car and have you lock your doors. You know, who wants, I don't want people like that around me like that. You know, who's, they're not, they're not letting them out if they're still showing actions of being sex offenders, if they're being assaulters, re-offenders. You know, the recidivism rate is ridiculous. But when you have communities that come together and actually want to try to do something,
One minute.
and you have places like the Hanu and the Michael's House that have something, that's the only way that recidivism is going to change. And I'm just here today to let you know that I am proof of that change. And I'll be more than happy to answer any of you guys' questions concerning being the house manager at the Michael's House or anything else.
Thank you so much. Any questions, comments? Yes, Councilman Bowers.
Thank you so much for coming in and being so open about your story. That takes a lot of guts and a lot of courage, and I really respect you and appreciate you for coming down. And congratulations.
Thank you very much.
On your sobriety so far.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys letting me speak.
And on being a new father.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day.
Same to you. Next testifier. Anyone else care to testify on this issue? Please come forward, anyone else? Mr. Watts, oh, come on forward, please, yeah.
My name is Mark Brohman. It's B-R-O-H-M-A-N. I live at 2637 Washington, right across the street from this facility. And the first thing I'll mention, and Dean and Cindy both mentioned, and several of the other testifiers is, we're okay with one of these houses in the neighborhood. If they put reasonable amount of people, we think this is an unreasonable amount of people stuffed into this house. We've got facilities just down the street from us. We've got all kinds of halfway houses between us and 27th, or between 27th and South Street and A Street, which is the near-south neighborhood. I saw a map the other day. There are houses all over on B Street. So we've got them all over the place. We're not saying we don't want this, not in my backyard. We're just saying that putting 12 men in a, in a place like this does not work out. I saw a statistic, 40 to 60 people snore. 40 to 60% of the men snore. Women, it's a little less. But that means when you put two or three guys in a room, your roommate's going to be snoring. You've got to have some privacy once in a while. You have to be able to go somewhere to get away from all of this. I mean, there's all kinds of pressure. I do have a letter from our neighbors, like, before I forget, I'll pass that out. The Swayards weren't able to attend tonight, so I wanted to pass that out. I'm not going to read through my testimony because that would take the full five minutes. I'm going to highlight just a couple of things. It was brought up that Mr. Carrados' attorney said that this was an experiment, and I think it's failing. Former residents have stated that they felt unsafe in the house. Food and personal items were stolen, and there were no house managers present frequently. We believe that there have been at least five house managers in the last seven months, and we have talked to residents that said one of the house managers was fired because of drug use. We heard someone earlier say that there was drug use at the North 35th Street House. The gentleman that was just up in front of me said he's the manager there. Was it the person before him? Was it two people before him? I don't know. But there was drugs mentioned when, when that person testified earlier about the North 35th Street House. Every house on 26th to 27th in Washington, that block is owner-occupied. There's no duplexes. It's zoned R2. We did that on purpose back in the early 90s. We're very proud of that, keeping low density because of the parking issues. I'm going to pass out because we spent the money to do it, so I might as well use them. So here are 32 parking violations, and you can just flip through these. And those are 38 parking violations that occurred in front of this house and in the street in front of this house with people getting dropped off, cutting off people's driveways, parked across people's driveways. That's not normal. You know, the attorney says, "Oh, this is just a rowdy neighbor." I don't have a neighbor that I've turned in 38 times or talked to, you know, had to go talk to 38 times because they're parked across my driveway, in my driveway, in front of the fire hydrant. So I wanted to point that out. We've also got, you know, was mentioned people being dropped off. I'm going to give you a copy. Here's a picture of a gentleman sitting on the front. And then the sign on the front door says, "If you just got paroled, call the case manager, Chrissy," and it gives her number ASAP. Thank you, Michael's House. Does that sound like there's someone there at the house? No. This is on the front door and the back door of the house. And we've seen numerous people dropped off weight. We've seen people knocking on the front door, go to the back door and knock. People are not there during the day. People are not there at night. There have been times when there haven't been managers there for days. They talk about, "Oh, the managers are there." Well, they haven't been. During the planning commission meeting, I think this attorney said, "Oh, I think we went 24 hours one time without a house manager." We know that's not correct. So I'll pass those two photos around. And then these last set of photos are going to show you just how tight it is. The first photo shows you the back steps where people smoke is just right off of Dean's windows, and he can't open them up in the summer because the smoke wafts in. The people are talking on their phones at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. This shows you how close this is to 27th Street. When they talk about using one of the sunrooms for the managers, because there are only four bedrooms in this house, there are two sunrooms. And the, the second floor is not air-conditioned. These sunrooms, if you live in an older house, you know those sunrooms get hot in the summer and cold in the winter. They have windows on three sides, and you can reach out those windows. They're five feet from 27th Street. So when a semi goes by, if you reach out far enough, you could actually touch a semi trailer going down the street. And you want to put people? And you want to put people and live in that kind of facility? Here shows you just how close that is, and then how close Dean's house is. I'll just pass those around since I've got them up here. And then here's a statement that I wanted to bring up. "When I called parole officer Jordan Wall on July twenty-ninth, she called me back on August first, and I asked her why she was placing parolees in the house, because we knew they were over three at the time. That was already breaking the law, and having more than three unrelated adults in a house was against the law. Her response was, in quote, 'I wrote it down that day because I knew this day was coming, I'd be in front of you.' Michael told me he had the city council, and they, and he was going to get approval, and is being streamlined. That's the quote I wrote down that day and kept it until this time." So anyway, I'm not going to go into a bunch of this and that's. We care about the people there, Dean tells you, he gives them rides, he gives them food, he wants to talk to them, some of the people ignore him. One guy gentleman knocked on his door the other night, hollered at him and said, you've made eight of us homeless, I know where you live, there's going to be hell to pay. It scared the neighborhood. You know, you've got people, we have people that were in there for manslaughter. He got to know one of the gentleman, he was in there for manslaughter. These, these people aren't on their third DUI. These are serious criminals, and they need help when they get out, and I don't think they're getting it. I think they should be going to the haunted houses and places like that where they have professionals dealing with the people. This is a system to make money for Mr. Crowe. And, and another point about them being family, we've noticed lately, all the white residents are smoking on the back porch, and the black and Latino guys are out front, and the guy said there's a lot of stress in the house, and there's good guys and bad guys. And so when people start talking like that in the house, there's problems. So with that, I'd gladly entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Appreciate it, appreciate the photos and handouts, we'll get them back to you. All right, next testifier, anyone else? Anyone else care to testify? Okay.
Hi.
Welcome.
Julie Knight, um, operations director at the Michael House.
Yes.
Um,
Yes.
Is my time started?
Oh, yes.
Yes. What? I'm sorry?
No, I was, it's okay, I was talking to the court.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're good, right, thank you.
Um, six-six-zero-seven in Maple Street. I, uh, I don't quite know where to start at this point, it's been quite a long evening. Um, I had, um, residents with me, and they felt so uncomfortable here in this situation, and the questions that were asked, and the things that were said of them, that they asked to go back to the house. So they went back to the house, um, there were three of them actually. Um, I'm also feeling uncomfortable talking up, up here because I've seen the reaction of people that I'm sitting in the audience behind, laughing, smirking, and I, so I feel uncomfortable up here talking, and I don't know how to fix that. So, um, I will say, um, we, maybe I just ask, what do you want to know? Because basically, the clients getting into the, the houses start with me. Um, I do worry a lot about guys that have served their time already, and now are on pending bed space because they wanted that house closed. I had wives calling me, I had children calling me that were waiting for their dads to get out, and they're still calling, like, to this night, I'm getting phone numbers because they're still waiting to get paroled to a house. Um, the house on Thirty-Fifth, um, had six clients there. Um, we moved three of them from Washington there, so now there's nine, so there's empty beds there. And then we moved some to the Walker House, and there are still beds there, I went there and I looked, so there's still open beds, um, there, so no one was, I mean, and I talked to all the guys, and I was like, this is what's happening, and they were like, nope, we would love that, rather than be somewhere else or on the streets. Um, I've not heard of anyone in all the length that I've done this of someone getting sent back because they can't find a place to live. Um, we worked with the officers to find places for all them to live, a couple of them that were self-pays, um, went and lived with family members. Um, so no, none of that is, um, accurate. There were some mistruths that were said that came out of my mouth, which I won't, I don't want time to waste, um, on that, but, um, I will say some of the people that came and spoke to us, um, of all the calls that I've gotten, and all the complaints, some of them I didn't get from, I don't remember what her name was in the green hat, in the green shirt. Like, those people, and then the, the guy in the gray, like, they've never called me and asked what we do, or if they could tour a house, or what our programming is. So instances that she was referring to happened two years before I started. So it's tough for me to have, like, so much, there's so much confidence that they one-hundred percent know what happens at our houses, because it's virtually impossible. Um, I, um, I'm, I'm an open book, I do meet with parole and talk to them weekly. I have great relationships with parole in Omaha and in Lincoln. I don't, I, like I said, I'm just a little, I'm, I'm disappointed that my guys, um, were so upset, um, I'm, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. Um, we do UA, we, um, we do breathalies. To me, uh, it's, it's nobody's right to kind of define what my family is. Um, it's heart-wrenching to me that the woman that said that she drove to the houses in Omaha, um, and had to lock her doors, I will tell you that I am divorced and I have three children, which doesn't matter. Um, I could only afford to buy a house just a few minutes away from one of the houses she was referring to, and that doesn't make me a bad person because I live in North Omaha. I mean, I hear gunshots all the time. I mean, my neighbors, we park ours cars, nobody does, nobody does this, you know? Like, we, I've, I've never, I have left my door unlocked many, many times, on accident, just because I'm running out the door, so, to me, that's, that's a personal opinion, it's not a, it's not a fact.
One minute.
I've been there nine years, so, I don't know. I, I, I will answer any questions that you want, we do have, we do offer classes. They've, I've never seen a neighbor sit in on a class if they wanted to sit in, we hold them every Thursday. Um, the house managers have meetings every Sunday. So I, I, I don't know. Um, whatever questions that you may ask for me, I, I, I'll answer for you.
Thank you very much. Um, we have a series of questions, we'll start with Councilman Bowers.
Thanks for coming down and driving down to Lincoln. Um, how many folks do you have at the Washington House now?
Zero.
Zero?
So I'll explain to you, um, the clientele that we had there, they were all on parole. Only, um, a couple of them were paid vouchers. So that house, um, was, uh, clients that were having a hard time finding a place to live, so they became what we call a self-pay client, which is that twenty-five dollar a rate, because, I don't know how much they understand, I, I mean, I go into the prisons, I, but I, I understand how that works, that, you know, there's reasons and, and ways to get approved for a voucher, and ways to not. And one of them is if you have a job while you're in work release, you have a certain amount of money saved up, um, you're automatically going to get denied for those things, so, um, a lot of my, um, guys are getting out, they already have more money than me in the bank. So, um, they may have to live in, uh, sober living, you know, for thirty days, just to prove that, you know, coming from here to here that they can, um, get their own apartment. But a lot of our guys, most of our clients are, um, there by choice, they're, they're self-pay.
So there's zero folks at the house that were trying to determine if people should have reasonable accommodations for?
Well, well, parole board told us that they all had to leave, so they're all gone.
Right, 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 I mean,
So currently, there's nobody in the house, if that's it.
So, and then, why did, do you know why parole wanted all those folks removed?
I'm going to assume that it was complaints that came from the neighbors. Again, we found out actually by one of the, um, clients that called us, uh, to let us know, and then parole was already in the process of trying to move them, we didn't kick anyone out, no one is homeless. We, we, we worked and found a way for everyone to go. I talked to some of the guys because I'm only, you know, one person, I don't have a truck, but they helped each other, that's that. They helped each other move, and they were communicating with me the whole time. So, um, again, it was a Saturday, I also, you know, I was already in Lincoln like four times that week, so I was like, you know, but I, I knew they had, they had help. Because I, I, I came down the on Fri-, I came down on Thursday and asked if any of the guys wanted to help move. And they were all very distraught, and they were like, Julie, can we just stay here one more night? And if, you know, we will be out by Friday because that's what, you know, parole said. But nobody from the parole board, um, has since gotten ahold of me, I've called a couple of times and left messages just to kind of also figure out why, because if it's something that, you know, is fixable, I'd like to fix it. So, because, um, I mean, the other two houses now, they're not overcrowded, but those guys are helping each other out by opening up, they moved their stuff around, they did everything they could to help those guys.
So parole wanted them removed from the Washington House?
Only, and actually, so I don't know how, if you know how parole works, at the end of every two, you know, the month, the last two weeks, usually that's when you have your hearings and in your release dates. And so that was a huge release date. So, um, during that time, I'm not sure if the folks understood how many people that they were affecting, because it was a, quite a large tree of people that were affected that day, so, um, that's how, the guys that were supposed to be paroled to the house, um, they got put on pending bed space, but other houses, so like my other two houses, so, um, the parole board approved for them to go to the other houses. So it was just that house, and my guess, if they had a huge issue with us, they would have not let anybody parole to us at all. But I had a client, I had six guys paroled that day, um, that would have been more if Washington would have been available. Um, I had guys paroled in Omaha and in Lincoln because, you know, those rules apply everywhere, but the same parole board, um, allowed other, um, residents to come out to other houses, just not that one.
Okay. And I, I, I just want to say that, you know, I think it's very obvious that, you know, you have a passion and a heart for the work that you're doing. And, uh, I'm sure that the folks that you, uh, work with definitely see you as a person of support.
They do. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm there a lot, I'm the one, like, I'm usually like the mom. I mean, some of the instances that were brought about, it, I just, there just needs to be more, um, uh, proper asking, because some of the situations that the neighbor put them in, if they would have called me, I would have said, I advise you not to do that, just because you, you know, you're not sure. So a lot of the, I don't know, I, I don't, yeah. So.
Thank you. Councilwoman Becky is followed by Councilwoman Washington.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for coming down today, I appreciate it very much. We heard from a lot of neighbors today, um, regarding, um, the, the use of the house in particular. Can you tell me about the interaction, um, if any, that you have had with the neighborhood or the neighborhood association um, since the purchase of this residence?
Sure. So, um, um, the, the day that Mike and I went and visited the house, which they had brought up, and there was two different stories that we were brother and sister, or that we were married and had kids. I didn't introduce myself any other way, other than who I was, um, and what Mike's name was, and, um, they were happy to see us, and, um, they said that they wanted to have us over for wine in the backyard sometime, and that's just kind of where it was at. Our maintenance guy was there also, and so was Jordan Wall, the parole officer. She was also there, I don't know if they saw her, you know, but she was also in the house that day. But, um, I've never been introduced or invited to, uh, a neighborhood association. Um, most of the calls I've gotten, I've gotten some pretty aggressive ones because my trash can was in the wrong spot. I, I, I just, I just, um, just a lot of complaints. Yeah.
What do you feel like your organization's role is with interacting with neighbors and the neighborhood in general?
Well, I can just speak on, like, of how we are with all the other neighbors, of all the other houses and locations that we have, and they're just like neighbors, I mean, we wave, we say hi, I mean, I haven't had anything like I have at Washington at any of my other locations. So I just, it's kind of just like a normal neighborhood interreaction, um. I have a house in Omaha that's solely for, um, registered clients, and all the neighbors are aware, and it's going well, I guess, so I, I,
I'll leave it at that, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Knight, thank you for coming down. I've got a couple of questions, um, just, um, someone earlier tonight talked about, the differences between how Region Five and Region Six, um, associate with Michael House, uh, and Region Six in Omaha, um, lists Michael House as a provider, but Region Five doesn't. And I'm wondering if you've reached out to Region Five, what's your relationship? Or how did you get the relationship you have with Region Six, and have you considered something similar for Five?
Oh, sure, um, so I can only speak a little bit on that, because usually Mike is the one that kind of does that stuff, but, um, Region Six was already in place before I started. And so, um, meetings that we've had are like Zoom meetings of like, or whatever, maybe, yeah, I've been a part of like with Region Six, but, um, I typically, that's, that's Mike that does that, yeah.
Um, and then I'll, I'll ask that of, of Mike then, um, and then, uh, maybe we have one more question, just a second. In Omaha, I noticed, um, that they have, um, a definition for small group living disabled and, uh, large group living, uh, disabled, and I'm curious how the Michael Houses in Omaha are registered? Are they registered as small group living disabled?
I actually don't know that either, that would be a Mike question, he does all that paper. I, my role,
Do they have?
So every house is a different size, so it varies, I have one house that only has five. Um, I have an apartment complex, um, that has, um, we have eight units there, and there's, um, never more than four people per apartment, and sometimes there's two, sometimes there's one.
Okay.
And then I have, um, my house on Sixty-first for my registered clients, that house is quite large, and there's nine guys there, and that, that's all in Omaha.
Okay, so three houses in Omaha?
That I,
That you, uh, manage, okay.
Correct.
And how many Michael Houses again are in Omaha?
Uh,
And, all right, let me ask you a different question.
They're, they're managed by someone different, so my role is not, is if that makes sense. So that's, those houses, they are still sober living, but it's an, it's a, it's where they can get a, an apartment and not have like, you know, a house manager, that kind of thing, so they're earning, um, a renter's history without having to have like a intensive background check.
Okay, so you manage three sober living houses, you do, in, in Omaha?
Y- yes.
Yeah, of that size, you just are told this size, okay. Well, thank you, I'll ask, um,
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, I'll ask, uh, Michael the questions about,
Sure.
Region Five and Six.
Councilwoman Shelby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming forward, and I, Councilwoman Washington asked one of my questions, what is your role, you manage three houses?
I do a lot of things.
Do a lot of things, I understand. So, we've heard from a lot of people tonight. The question before us is whether you're eligible for a reasonable accommodation.
Correct.
Because having more than three people in the house would have some therapeutic value to the other residents of the house. What can you tell me about that? Did you have evidence that it would, or how would you measure that it has, that having more than three people in the house would be therapeutic?
Yeah, I, so I've worked for,
Based on your experience, yeah.
So I've worked about a year with Mike, so, um, what I have, um, noticed in Omaha, and, and actually currently in Omaha, there's a couple of guys that got approved to get an apartment together. I mean, they made that bond, I mean, the guys tonight that came together, they are bonded. So some of my guys, they get out and they request to be with certain people because they've been in the system with those people, and they feel more comfortable, you know, because they know them. Um, in Omaha, I, that's why I wish that more people would call and, and tour some of the facilities that they were, you know, making, you know, ideas about, because it does feel like, you walk in and it's like, good morning, and then like, we're, it's just very family, like, they're helping each other, they're going to AA meetings together. If some of my clients don't have a ride and I'm not available, because maybe I'm at a different part in the city, because I'm only in Omaha, you know, a few days a week, because I have my houses in Omaha too, there's, there's three of us, so it's, it's hard to be everywhere all the time for all my guys, but I have, um, they help each other that way. And that, that wouldn't be possible if they weren't feeling like they had some kind of respect for, you know, who they're living with, or some kind of, you know, friendship or bond, I guess, so, um, it happens every day. So I can give you a hundred idea, I mean, it is, I see it every day.
I'm, I'm, I apologize, I was a little broad on my question.
Sure.
You said you had one house that had five people in it at this point in time?
In Lincoln, I mean, in Omaha?
Omaha, yes.
Yeah.
And for this, we're asking for more than five.
And that, that, that house can have more than five. The way that some of the guys are, you know, they've, The way that some of the guys are, you know, they've been at like our apartment buildings for long, they feel comfortable there. That house is like a next step, because it's guys that have been working for quite a while, and they've been self-paid for quite a while, so it's a little bit more independent. So it's kind of a system that way. And they sometimes want to stay, because they're comfortable with their roommates at the apartments, or they choose to go to that house. But I get a lot of guys also that come out of like work release in Omaha or Lincoln that have had jobs, that they skip that apartment process, because they've been at work release for so long, and they showed those skills to their case managers and reentry, that they're capable of skipping that and then going straight to that house. So I leave that open for my more mature clients, like mine, to go there.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. I'm sorry for coming right back with another question, but what you just said confused me.
Oh.
So what's the continuum? Is it an apartment first, and then a house?
Not necessarily. So they, so here, we don't, I don't have probation clients here in Lincoln, because you need 24-hour. Well, in Omaha, I have one location that can have probation. So if I had a probation client that came to a house, or needed to come to a house in Lincoln, it would be that he was not on a voucher system, so he was on a self-pay rate, right? So the rules of the probation, because there's rules for a voucher that I have to hold up to, you know, for parole, and there's rules that I have to uphold when clients are on probation. And so in Omaha, my apartments are 24-hour, and they have, it's a gated community. And so when my younger ones are coming out of like the youth facility, like, you know, because it's 18 and older, so I do have guys that come out and they're 18 or 19. Not so much here in Lincoln, but because the youth facility is in Omaha. But they go there to the apartments first, because it's.
And so the apartment provides the 24.
Because that's the only place where my probation clients can go that are on a paid voucher.
And when they sort of move out of the need of having that 24 seven?
They can go to the house, or usually by then, they've moved in with like a family member. Usually what the goal is, is to have their own place, or to move in with a family member.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council, are you sure? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Councilwoman Schob?
Madam Chair, at some point, I'd like to ask some staff questions.
Yes, we've had a request for that at the end of, yes. Thank you. Thank you. No, you're good. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other testifiers present that would like to testify on this issue?
Hi, my name is Diane Ogden, and I live at 2727 Washington. I've lived there since I was about seven, out for one year, and back in my house that I've been in since I was 20. And I'm 64 now. There was a, my neighbor who lives at 2719, where I used to live. Her husband has a cousin that got kicked out of the 52nd and Walker during this parole thing, because she had called me, and she said that they were removing people that were on parole. And I also wanted to say another thing. My daughter's disabled. I mean, she is brain-injured, disabled, cannot work, took forever to get disability. Every state she moves to, she has trouble getting it, because my son-in-law is in the Navy. So when I hear disabled, my daughter's disabled. She can't work, she loops her speech. You know, it was horrid. We had to get a lawyer to get her disability here, and then they, you know, take a third of that, so. But I just know at that 52nd and Walker, my neighbor called me and said that her husband's cousin got booted or removed, and they said they were doing that to all of them. And apparently, they didn't. But he said that he didn't have a place to go. I don't know where he went. So, I mean, that's my statement. I guess I should sign in, huh?
Thank you for doing so. Are there questions for Ms. Ogden? Yes, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to clarify, sir, are you in favor of or opposed?
I'm opposed to the Michael.
I thought so, but I thought it would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm the neighbor to the east, and I never got a letter, and at all, and my neighbor did. And that's how I met these people, wonderful people, that are, oh, my new neighbor is now on the other side of the road, so.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here, Ms. Ogden.
You're welcome.
Anyone else present that wants to testify on this item? Anyone else? All right, we have had a request for staff to answer some questions. I'm making a plea for Director David Carey, if you're in the other room. Over. There you are. I'm sorry, I've been looking at you all day. We have Steve Henrickson present. Thank you, Mr. Henrickson. I'm sorry. You've waited a long time for this moment, haven't you?
That's all right. Steve Henrickson, the Planning Department Director, David Carey is out of town today.
All right. I know that Councilwoman Schob and Councilwoman Washington both have questions, so who would like to go first? All right. All right, Council, thank you. Councilwoman Schob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Henrickson, thanks for coming forward. I have some questions about the Planning Commission, the staff recommendation, the vote of the Planning Commission, and some of the evidence that's presented. Let's start with your staff recommendation for the hearing on February, was it February? No, it was January.
It was in January, yes. So our recommendation was approval, based on all of the information that we had received up to that point. So our recommendation was, prior to there being any testimony by residents or further testimony by the applicant as well, prior to that time. The Planning Commission recommendation is 7-0 for denial. And that was based on all of the testimony that they received at the Planning Commission hearing, both from the applicant and from people who were opposed. And some of the testimony, as was mentioned tonight, from the Planning Commission members themselves, is that they felt that it did not meet the threshold that was included within the ordinance for granting a reasonable accommodation.
And would you elaborate on that a little bit, the threshold?
Well, in particular, some of the Planning Commission members mentioned that they didn't feel a case had been made for there being a therapeutic value to having 12 persons. Nor had, is one of the criteria that is listed in terms of the city granting a reasonable accommodation.
And how would you measure that therapeutic value?
What I'm saying is the Planning Commission members in their statements as to why they were voting against it, that was some of the reasons that they listed. They didn't listen, list a certain threshold they recommended against the project entirely.
So since that hearing and that testimony, has additional evidence come to your, come to you as a member of the Planning Department? And would you reevaluate and make a different recommendation, if it did come to you?
So we haven't received any different kind of information that was presented to the Planning Commission. Of course, you all have received a lot of additional information this evening, which is part of what you should be looking at in terms of when you make a recommendation. So our department certainly tries to support our Planning Commission in their role of making a recommendation. We also felt like, at the time when we had the recommendation, all the information that we had, that it was appropriate to recommend approval prior to the Planning Commission hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Becky also has questions. So Councilwoman Washington, are you ready, or would you like Councilwoman Becky to?
No, I think I'm ready.
Okay, you are recognized.
Mr. Henrickson, you started by talking about the test for therapeutic value. And I just want you to, it's been a long evening. If you could just list the three tests that we're looking at, and then I'll ask another question.
Sure. So just going back in terms of the staff report, I want to make sure I find the right section here. And I would also note that Abby Luttrell with the City Attorney's Office is here. So if I make any misstatements, I know I will be properly corrected. Just wanted to find the right text that talks about the financial therapeutic value as part of what the. Yeah, if you want to help him. As I'm flipping back and forth, you would think it would immediately jump out.
Abby Luttrell from the Law Department, 555 South 10th Street. So there are three elements to the reasonable accommodation claim. Whether it is necessary, and there are two prongs off of that, therapeutically necessary or financially necessary. And the other element is that it affords equal opportunity to enjoy the use of a dwelling. And then the third element is, is it reasonable? And then within that reasonable element box, we have kind of two defenses for the city. If it's an undue administrative or financial burden on the city, then it is not reasonable.
Thank you very much. Early, I think at the very beginning of this, we heard testimony from the applicant that we have a complaint process, a complaint-driven application process. Would you agree that someone does not need to apply until there is a complaint?
No, I would not agree. And that when people have called and talked to us about properties, and we have people call and ask about group homes and other facilities to our offices all the time, we always recommend people first contact us, see what the regulations are. And if there's some process they need to go through, they should go through that process first. Whether it's a childcare center, whether it's a reasonable accommodation, a rezoning, whatever the case would be, that is always our recommendation, and that would be the recommendation in this circumstance as well.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Becky, you are recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Luttrell, could you please share with me how City Law came to the recommendation of, because I'm assuming that City Law advised Planning Department through this process. Could you determine City Law's, how you came to the determination originally of approval, that this met the reasonable accommodation request as provided to you?
I would characterize that review process as reviewing the staff report from the Planning Department and confirming, approving, that at that time, with the information provided, that the applicant had laid the foundation for each of those elements that they're required, those three that we just talked about, necessary, equal opportunity, reasonable. As you all understand, it's a limited universe of facts at that point, when it gets to the Planning Commission, because what is available was what was submitted by the applicant. And Planning did some research on kind of the size of the dwelling, the neighborhood, and I think reached out to LPD. And so the universe of facts available at that point were what went into the Planning Commission staff report. And at that time, the Law Department could approve of a recommendation of approval. The record before you right now is much more voluminous than what was available at the time that that staff report was made, because it includes everything you heard tonight, and because the planning minutes are attached to what you received, that's part of the record too. So there's much more information at this point.
And now that that information is out there, would the recommendation change?
I don't know that I'm comfortable giving you a recommendation from the Legal Department on the record. I think that there is enough in the record now that this body could make a determination either way, that could be supported by the evidence that you've received.
Okay. Is it, you were speaking of the, to Mr. Schob's point.
Oh, Abby, yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're good.
To Councilman Schob's point, where does one draw a line in terms of therapeutic?
I think that is something that all of you will need to weigh, based on the evidence, both the testimony, the written evidence that you've received tonight. In this role, it's a bit unusual, because you are more like fact-finders than lawmakers in this situation. So I guess I would encourage you to weigh the credibility of the people who testified and the information that you have received to reach your determination of whether that the applicant has presented enough to convince you that there is a therapeutic or financial necessity here, or if the evidence in opposition has convinced you that there is not.
That's all for now.
Councilman Bowers. Thank you, Councilwoman Becky. Councilman Bowers.
I have a question for you, Ms. Luttrell. The fact that no one is living at this house, how can there be a determination that people who aren't living in a house need an accommodation? Like, it's not being made on behalf of a specific person, it's not being made by a specific person. The house is effective, I mean, not effective, I mean, it is empty right now.
So the Fair Housing Act allows organizations to make application on behalf of the people that they would serve. So if we can imagine had Michael's house come in after they had purchased the house, but before anyone lived there, we would say that they could make application for a reasonable accommodation, based on who they expected to live there. So I might suggest that we're possibly in a similar circumstance now, where they have the house, no one lives there, but they are still asking for an accommodation, because they expect to house individuals with disability.
That actually answers the question for me. Thank you so much.
Councilman Schob.
Ma'am, hi. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Luttrell, thanks for sticking around and helping. I'm looking at the staff report again, and I'd like to refer to page eight, and item number seven and eight, if we could. And I want to talk a little bit about our responsibility as, based on fair housing. I think that defines people in recovery as disabled, so that we have. And then as far as the reasonable accommodation, the very last summary paragraph is, is, in granting a reasonable accommodation, we may impose any conditions? Does that mean if we were to vote to approve this, we could add additional conditions, including size on this?
You could. It would be within your authority to do so legally. That modification could be considered a denial that could result in further process. Can I say one thing, just since you mentioned it? There was some discussion about whether individuals who are convicted of.
Thank you.
And, and I think I've found where that has come from. This is from the Office of the General Counsel, Guidance on Fair Housing Act and Application to Criminal Records. So this is another HUD, Department of Justice publication. And what they're really talking about there is that landlords do not need to make an accommodation to their criminal conviction policies, because, and then because their tenant or applicant is disabled or is in recovery from drug or alcohol eviction, or drug or alcohol conviction. So what that really gets to is that those felony criminal conviction policies do not need to be waived, and that being a convict is not, being convicted of a crime involving alcohol or substance abuse is not synonymous with, with being disabled, although there is some overlap. It is somewhat confusing. I think if you think about it like, in, so say, in the employment context, an employee may ask for a reasonable accommodation to attend AA meetings. An employer couldn't tell one person, "Yes, you are disabled, you're entitled to that accommodation," and tell another employee, "No, you're not, only because you were convicted of a drug crime 20 years ago."
And I, may I ask, thank you for reading my mind, because I was struggling with all of. Thank you for reading my mind, because I was struggling with all of the exceptions that were offered, and I'm trying to put my mind around this. And so, I think two different gentlemen talked about, or one gentleman, one gentlewoman, talked about conviction of manufacturing and distributing a controlled substance. So, just by virtue of having that conviction doesn't mean that they're not able to claim being disabled.
Correct. It means that you can discriminate against them based on that conviction.
You can discriminate based on the conviction of manufacturing and distribution. I'm going to say this, and it may sound horrible, but you can discriminate based on sexual offense, or being a sexual offender?
Yes.
Because that was also something that was listed. You can discriminate based on being a current user of a controlled substance.
Yes.
And I think Michael House would say that they do discriminate on the basis of them being a juvenile offender, because they don't allow under, they don't allow under 18s or juveniles.
You could discriminate based on age.
You could discriminate based on age. And then there was, wait a second, disqualified as disabled because of sex offending and drug distribution, and they pose a direct threat?
Correct.
Tell me, please explain that one.
That, I'm having trouble thinking of it, of one in the context of, of substance abuse, being in recovery from alcohol or substance abuse. But conceivably, someone could be disabled with a debilitating mental illness, where they became violent towards people who looked like their father, or something. And so, a landlord could evict someone who was violent and injured their neighbors, even if that violence was a symptom of their mental illness. They would not have to waive their policies of keeping other, you know, of no violence in the apartment unit, just because that violence was due to mental illness.
Okay.
So, being a direct, if making the accommodation would be a direct threat to others, or to the person themselves, you did not have to make the accommodation. In what we're talking about here in the context of zoning, that's kind of that undue financial and administrative burden. I have never found any cases of direct threat in the zoning context.
Councilman Schob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Luttrell, Mr. Henderson, can we go back to where we were before we got sidetracked Mr. Henderson, you responded to Councilman Washington's question earlier about not having to apply, and there were some comments from testifiers that the current facility was operating illegally. Could you help me understand that a little better?
So, as we had noted in the staff report, the property was purchased in June, and then the applicant included a letter from Building and Safety, that Building and Safety had been contacted by residents soon after it started operating, I'm assuming sometime late July, early August. When they had gone out, they had noticed some building housing code violations, as well as noting that it did not conform to the zoning ordinance. At that time, it was looked to see, well, if you're a group home, could you meet the spacing for that? If you're transitional living, could you meet the spacing? And the determination was no. So, it was left with, you have more than three unrelated people living there, that's another one of your violations. Building and Safety said the other violations had been corrected, but that left that still was a zoning violation.
So, the action that we're seeing today is an attempt to come into compliance? Would that be fair to say?
Correct. The reasonable accommodation is asking for them to be allowed under the zoning ordinance as a family, versus asking for reasonable accommodation to revise the rules for group homes or transitional living.
And those other qualifications we have, group homes, transitional living, and halfway houses, which I'm not sure if we legally have a halfway house, they, would they have qualified, could they have made some other type of alterations to their model to qualify for one of those categories?
Under the zoning ordinance, we have, the halfway houses goes off into a state term.
Not something we have in our county.
So, we do not have that here. We have group homes, we have residential healthcare facilities, we have transitional living facilities, we have domestic shelters, and we have homeless shelters, as all examples of other types of group livings. We also have other things like fraternities, sororities, dwellings for members of religious orders, so there's other categories as well. But no, we did not see that they fit under, under any of those other categories. So, while they could have asked for a reasonable accommodation from one of the categories, instead, they asked for it for the definition of a family, which is, as you saw last summer, there were some other applicants that asked for the same thing. They asked for reasonable accommodation from the definition of family.
One more question, if you'll allow me, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
We had someone testify today about police calls, and there was a comment about that being an undue burden. The undue burden was not on the community, but on the city. Was that correct? The city financially, the city administratively, or the city as in violation of our existing zoning codes. We had some people, and so, where's the level? I think in your, in the notes, the Police Department was contacted, and they did not feel it was an undue burden. How do we know when it becomes an undue burden? Can anyone help me understand that?
I can comment on what the Police Department said, and then I'll have Abby Cap comment on the rest of it. I had contacted them and let them know here was this request, what, did they have any information? The officer looked up the number of calls, he looked up the type of calls as well, went through each of the types of calls, and said that, in his opinion, no, he did not see this as something that was unusual. And so, that's how we came up with our comments in the staff report, is that, yes, there had been five calls in the five or six months time period, but in his view, none of them were particularly unusual.
Undue burden and financial administrative burden is generally looked at in the context of the city as a whole. So, when you're looking at a financial burden on the city, it would be, so the finance, like, the impact on the budget for the year for the entire city. So, it's a pretty high threshold to hit administrative burden.
What about the third reason, fundamental alteration of our plan and zoning? We have categories already, and they're asking us to ignore that and do something. Is that not an undue burden on our existing code?
Again, courts have looked at that on a very macro scale. So, it, a fundamental alteration of the zoning code in cases where they found that for reasonable accommodations, it would be something like putting a 95-bed skilled nursing facility in a residential neighborhood. A court has found that that was a fundamental alteration of the neighborhood. There are many, many cases on this exact same definition, this exact same accommodation request to the definition of family in multiple jurisdictions, and many courts have found that it is not a fundamental alteration. Some courts have found, in certain circumstances, that it is, but I would say that most have not. When they're denied in other jurisdictions, it's usually not on that fundamental alteration ground. It's more likely to be on that financial or therapeutic necessity prong.
You had asked about zoning. I really want to know about the R1 versus R2, and the difference there. This is currently zoned as R2, correct?
Correct. We have eight residential zoning districts, and a lot of the rules and regulations would apply the same, that the family definition applies throughout all of the eight residential zoning districts.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone, for humoring me for a few minutes. You're very kind.
Any, thank you, Councilman Schob. Any other questions? Councilman Beckius?
If 12 people of the same family moved in to this home, would, would the Planning Department or City Law consider it a fundamental change in the zoning code?
Legally, no. The city would have, if 12 related people by our definition lived in this home, there would be no violation, there would be no legal recourse.
And if it were 12 college students who were unrelated to each other, would we consider it to be a fundamental change of the zoning code?
We would consider it to be a violation of the zoning code. That fundamental alteration analysis is very specific to reasonable accommodation requests. The 12 college students would not be considered disabled unless they all happen to be, all happen to be disabled, which is not what I understand your hypothetical to be.
You're correct. If we backed up from the city point of views that we're looking at now, and spoke more generally, Abby, Ms. Luttrell, in regards to housing and disability, under that purview, is there any therapeutic requirement? Is, if someone is simply disabled, do they meet the standard?
Or what?
For, for being granted a reasonable accommodation.
If it, if it meets those three requirements, if an individual is disabled and requires something from their housing provider to enable them to have equal opportunity to enjoy their dwelling, if they meet those two, then their housing provider has to provide that under the Fair Housing Act if it is necessary, if it has therapeutic or financial necessity. Did that answer your question?
I guess here's, here's, let me ask a more general question. If, if, does someone have to be going through treatment necessarily, say, a cancer patient, or, or a person with HIV, or AIDS? Do they need to actually be going through therapy or some sort of treatment to qualify?
No. For example, if a person required a, was seeing impaired and required a seeing eye dog, and their landlord had a no dog policy.
Right.
That accommodation would have to be met, even though the person is never going to regain their sight. Because the dog enables them to live their life with their disability and enjoy their home.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good stuff. Okay. Councilman Bowers.
So, in the, with the seeing eye dog scenario, are there requirements that the dog needs to have, or can it be any dog?
While we're kind of talking, we're, emotional support animals are, the seeing eye dog is the more obvious example, but an emotional support animal would also, usually, the landlord would require, be required to waive their pet policy also. And the person who required the emotional support animal would not necessarily have to demonstrate that they were in ongoing therapy or treatment or anything. They would have to have documentation from someone with the knowledge of their disability, substantiate their need for the animal, but there's not some sort of ongoing requirement that you demonstrate that you're treating your disability.
So, you said that there would have to be some sort of documentation from someone. So, like, if my cat, who's arguably more popular than I ever will be, if I was to move into an apartment that didn't allow cats, that's true. If I was moving to an apartment that didn't allow cats, like, is there, what kind of requirements would be needed for my cat to be considered like an emotional support cat, or if I had a dog, a seeing eye dog?
Documentation from a person in a position to know, usually a mental health provider. Or if it was for a physical, you know, your MD or a nurse practitioner that says, you are disabled, this animal ameliorates your disability, and a brief description of how.
And that would not be breaking HIPAA, then, if I would have to provide documentation for that?
No. HIPAA is not, HIPAA applies when you are providing medical treatment. So, in the city, LFR is bound by HIPAA. It can't, employees of LFR can't be sharing private medical information about people.
Because I think, like, one of the things that we heard earlier was that, you know, folks who had a substance abuse issue did not need to have a diagnosis of substance abuse disorder, and I think someone, I can't remember exactly who it was, due to HIPAA, what I'm hearing you say is that would not be a HIPAA violation, and would actually be in line with what other accommodations would be needed by a housing provider.
There's some discretion here. As I mentioned at the Planning Commission, I think that there is some case law that supports the city being able to say, yes, we would like documentation for every single one of your residents, residents from now for forever. I think that we would, the city would want to think about that carefully, because that would put the city in possession of a lot of records of a lot of people. And we can also, we are on firm legal footing to accept what a provider tells us. If a provider tells us, this is what we do, here is who we treat, we have contracts that require them to acknowledge X, and we employ people who specifically work with this population, you can also accept that, and say, you know, absent any evidence that somehow people are feigning disability or something, that we will just accept that that is true.
Would that be an undue burden on the city?
To...
If they, if we were to say that the city had to accept and monitor, you know, mental health therapists, or psychologists, or physicians that said that, you know, if John Doe had a substance abuse order, disorder, and it would be therapeutically beneficial for him to live with other folks in the family?
I do not believe that would be an undue burden on the city. I think there would be consequences of the city taking that action, though, just because of public records, for instance.
So, may I?
Yes, go ahead. Councilman Beckius?
Walking through the scenario, so if a provider then just said it's therapeutic to live with 12 people, is that then providing some sort of evidence that they were meeting the requirement for therapeutic?
That's some evidence. That's what we had at, at the Planning Commission level, essentially. They said, we provide this that is therapeutic. It is evidence. It's up to you to, to weigh that, how much weight to give that evidence.
So, if a drug and alcohol counselor, for example, said, this is therapeutic, that could be evidence that it's therapeutic?
Correct.
Okay?
We're kind of talking two different things, though. We're talking evidence of the therapeutic value and evidence of protected status as a disabled person.
Right. Right.
Other questions?
I have a couple. After listening today, Ms. Luttrell, are you convinced that these 12 people have disabilities that we're serving?
My recollection of the testimony was that they confirm on their application or their lease that they have struggled with substances. That's one piece of evidence. They, I believe their policies in the, in the facility is that there's a zero tolerance policy for alcohol or drug use, and I think you could extrapolate that individuals who choose to live in that environment may have substance abuse issues. And I just don't know if we have seen evidence that those things are not true.
Well, my notes differ a little bit. Mr. Carrada said that they ask and they do the testing, but they don't always determine it, and, and I quoted him on my notes of saying, but when we don't know, there's ways you can find out. And so, that gives me a lot of pause, and we can ask in the closing how that works when they come up to close. So, I'm not convinced that all 12 of them are. Could they prove it, maybe? But I think it would, I think it gives us reason to think about asking for that documentation, knowing that you think, and I don't disagree, it would cause problems with long-term for the city.
I don't necessarily think it's problems. I just want to make, I'm not trying to...
No, I know.
...give advice either way, just...
No, but I think it's an important discussion, I, which I appreciate. No, but I think it's an important discussion, which I appreciate. So I'm, I don't know, I'm not quite convinced, as you are perhaps, but I wanted to have this discussion. And it also concerns me, and I don't know if it concerns you legally, there's ways you can find out. And I'm going, just to give him a heads up, I'm going to ask what that means and what they do when there's other ways to find out. That gives me a very uncomfortable feeling. So, but I'll ask them to explain it so you can be thinking about that. I think I had, I think that's all for now. Oh, one other thing, when we were talking about the definition of undue burden and you mentioned a threshold in the city, but not an amount, what, what would that, I mean theoretically be? I mean, more than what we're, we're talking about today with five police calls? And when, when are we going to set a standard? I respect the opinion of whoever gave us that recommendation when they called, when Steve called them, Mr. Henrickson. But is, I mean, how do we, how do we weigh that? Is that in a policy somewhere that we just accept that, that it's because we were advised that? Or is that binding, or, you know, I'm not quite sure what to do with that.
I can only tell you what is in case law and judges who have considered cases like this when cities raise an undue burden defense. And courts generally will look at the undue burden on the city as a whole. So one way to do that might be, what was the cost of? I mean, there's some way we could put a dollar amount to what it costs for police to respond to those five times in the scheme of, you know, even a month, a quarter, a year of costs to run the police department.
Sure, I understand. And that makes sense. I just, I can't imagine, and I clearly don't know all of our officers, but most of them that I am in contact with would never say it's a burden. So that also gives me some pause, you know? I mean, I can't imagine any of our police officers saying, well, no, that's no, that's a problem. So I, I just don't know that, that we can, that we should measure that as a solid answer. So I think you want to talk casework or legal, what's going on in other states? I mean, let's talk about our own.
One thing I could clarify is I did not ask him if he thought it was an administrative burden. I, I just asked, oh, are these five police calls where these? I took our conversation to be with these five calls for very serious crimes that were being committed. And the officer instead was responding, no, these were not serious offenses. These were the kind of calls that we might get from a house. So I, the conversation was not about a overall administrative burden, or was he burdened by doing it? Just were these calls in themselves a concern?
I appreciate that, Steve. And I think just again, for the record, this evening, we have heard a lot from neighbors and others who have, young people that were very brave to testify tonight that were afraid, that wanted to walk quickly with their young brother, drugs being thrown into the bushes, that were caused for arrest. So I just, you know, want us to think clearly through that as a council, what that may mean. And aside, I know from the, one of the three criteria, but it doesn't, I don't think it, I just want to keep things local. So any other questions?
Yes, Councilman Bowers.
I'm so sorry, not to belabor the point, but like one of the questions in front of us is, is it therapeutic, right? Does it provide a therapeutic benefit? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure before I organize my thoughts, what little they may be.
Very good.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you very much. Now we can go to closing or rebuttal. Mr. Watson, Mr. Carrata, do you care to close?
Can I have my question answered?
You do. All right.
Thank you. And I guess first, in rebuttal, you know, there are numerous things. I don't know that I'll be able to touch on them all, but I believe there are really two categories of concerns here. There's concerns in regards to safety. And then there's these concerns in regards to the safety and the activities that have transpired at or near the property that has, had been testified to. But then the other factor of concerns largely seems to be with our own clients and how we're treating them. And, and while I really do appreciate that concern, I think unfortunately, this has kind of turned into a forum or a referendum as to how one would properly operate a sober living house. But the fact of the matter is, when this is adjourned and everybody walks out of here, there's only going to be a handful of people here who are going to act, who are going to wake up tomorrow and actively concern themselves with running a sober living house. And it's important to also note that this is a private venture, comes at a great risk to Mr. Carrata. Now, Mr. Carrata did a great job of building his wealth through a masonry and construction enterprise, Carrata Homes and Carrata Construction. He's, and as his attorney, I can't tell you how concerning it is to me, the operations that he's enveloping because of the risk that it even carries to himself. There's not insurance policies that cover this sort of thing. Those, the, when I talk about this being a unique experiment, it truly is a unique experiment. We are helping take care of underserved individuals in this community without asking for a dime from anybody else in this room. There is some government funding involved. But if you've noted, and it has almost kind of seemed to become somewhat of a distraction in that regard. Our design is to be able to operate self-sufficiently. If we can get additional funds from other places, great, but the design is to operate self-sufficiently. And as we are sitting here today, there are no people in that house. And that in itself, the removal of the parolees by the parole board program, we will certainly find answers to. And we've worked with parole, and we've worked with probation before, and we have no doubts that we will be able to serve them again. They have their own guidelines. They have their own regulations. And I think it's appropriate to kind of keep the question that's before this board pigeonholed to what this council is designed to investigate. And that's not whether, whether the regulations that parole has set forth regarding these vouchers are being met. It's not, there is no question in regards to safety or whether this house can fit 12 people. There are other codes that are designed to accommodate that, and those have all been met. That is not the issue that is before this board today. The issue that's before this council is whether 12 unrelated people could occupy this home. And so if you look at the problems that pertain to safety that regard to, there was public fornication, there was catcalling, there was the smell of drugs, there was thrown drugs outside. I believe there was, Mr. Cole had testified to an altercation. And there was testimony in regards to somebody being brought out in handcuffs after those drugs were reported. We're not here to advocate for these activities whatsoever. When that call was made to Julie about the fornicating outside, and she said, yes. And maybe, and you can tell, you've seen her personality, nothing seems to get her down. But notice, she addressed the other issue that they were not even aware about, and those members were already kicked out of the home. It's not that this is just some sort of Wild Wild West going on. There have been five calls to the Lincoln Police Department. I think Mr. Cole testified to three of them. Where's the undue administrative burden from us? Unfortunately, this has been a distraction as to whether the clients are being treated appropriately. How much money is Mr. Carrata making? Nobody asked how many staff he has. Nobody asked what their salaries are. Nobody asked what kind of insurance he's got to pay for, for these properties. These are all considerations that go into this ultimate private enterprise. And it is an operation, if it is successful, will ultimately reduce the financial burdens from the taxpayers of the city of Lincoln. And I think that's really important to keep in mind, that the concerns that you've heard about from the residents here, it's important to note, and it's on page 27 of the staff report there, that was part of the materials we supplied, which was a letter from the Fair Housing Association and the Department of Justice, which asks, does the state or local government violate the Fair Housing Act if it considers the fears or prejudices of community members when enacting or applying its zoning or land use laws respecting housing? And it goes on to state, local governments may not act because of the fears, prejudices, stereotypes, or unsubstantiated assumptions that community members have about current or prospective residents. Now, that, that I think is very important because I think that encapsulates the majority of the concerns that are presented to you by a neighborhood association. So as I've heard the back and forth between the council and legal and planning, I ultimately think that the large question that maybe many of you are going through right now is, have we shown a therapeutic value? I believe we have. I believe that testimony has been here. I believe that testimony has been in front of you. What you ultimately have to weigh is have you heard any contrary testimony that we are not providing therapeutic value? Have you heard any research studies, or have anybody with an LMHP or any PhD background on their own get up and tell you that this therapeutic value of communal sober living is nonsense? You haven't. And the fact of the matter is, you've heard those presentations made to you before, that communal sober living has a therapeutic value and it's been accepted. What's changed? Complaints. A cacophony of complaints. And I understand that you have your job to respond to the citizens as they may demand, but unfortunately, I think it's, has kind of tipped the balance away from the focus here, which ultimately is, can 12 unrelated persons live in this house? And I think they can. And I don't think that there has been really anything to show that they haven't. The therapeutic value's been there. You've heard the testimony, I'm sorry, I believe from Emily, who testified that she believed the therapeutic value existed. So we've provided that we believe the therapeutic value exists. We've made reference in the materials that were supplied that therapeutic value exists. In the event that you're going to consider declining our application because there has been no therapeutic, or you don't believe that there's been a therapeutic value, I guess I would advise you to postpone your decision. And we will supply you with further therapeutic value because I can tell you, there's a plethora of it out there. There are numerous, I mean numerous studies that are done in this regard. And I can wheel up study after study that can kind of show that this communal therapeutic value exists. So in, in closing, I want to kind of keep the council's focus on the legal question that's before. And can these 12 unrelated people live together? One, has the therapeutic value been shown? Yes, it has. Have you seen significant evidence to the contrary? I do not believe you have. And then is there any undue financial or administrative burden? I don't believe that showing's been made. Has there been a fundamental alteration? I believe you've gotten that answer already. So when you look at the factors that you really have to guide yourself in making this decision, I think the answer is obvious, and that this miscellaneous item, 22014, should be approved. Thank you.
Councilman Bowers, you're recognized.
You know, I mean, it, it's not the complaints from the residents that's making me have different thoughts. I mean, it's the fact that all of your folks that were on parole were taken out and unceremoniously removed, especially when parole is a group that you say that you have a really strong relationship with, right? It's setting folks up to essentially break the law and not going through, you know, a different path to make sure that folks won't have any interruptions in their housing stay. I mean, for me, that's the, that's, that's, it's not the residents' complaints. It's, is this providing a therapeutic benefit when folks are getting evicted from their home by parole? Or when we're essentially gambling with their stay because we're waiting until a complaint was made, until someone said that you're violating city law or city code in order to make that determination? And so, and I mean, and I would argue that we have heard from people that do have, you know, degrees. I mean, we had a psychologist up here earlier. We have a letter from a social worker. Yeah, I mean, it's not just the resident complaints that are doing it for me. There are some things that I have grave concerns just about the, the benefit that you say that you're providing is actually being a detriment because I can't, I can't say that if a person goes into this housing, that they're going to still be there when other organizations that you say that you have a strong relationship with are saying, we got to take them out immediately. And we don't know the reason why that was, despite the fact that you have folks that meet with them weekly. There's not really a question in there. It's just the kind of, I don't know. It's, it's not, it's not resident complaints. I was a very sympathetic guest before. And I'm not afraid to take a hard vote. It's, I, I have concerns about folks that are staying at your place.
Other comments? Councilwoman Washington?
I asked a question earlier of your operations manager about your relationship with Region Six in Omaha, where they list you as a provider. And I am wondering if you have made contact with Region Five in Lincoln? And if so, or are you willing to, I guess, enter into the same kind of relationship with Region Five as a provider? Tell me what's similar about the situation and what is it I don't know?
Yes. So we do have a relationship with Region Six, Jennifer Gatterman out of Omaha. We've had various types of funding through them from time to time. And we've, I, I do remember, Region Six approached us because they wanted, they had a big need, so they contacted us. I did ask Jennifer if we should also contact Region Five. And I, I remember she said that it's not needed because they work together tightly. And if you're approved with one or approved with all, it's more of how they distribute the funds. And because we're based out of Omaha, Region Six can fund us. We've had funding from Region Six that applied to individuals that were in Lincoln that we were able to use for individual Lincoln. So I, I think that's why that question came up at that time. Because I was, what's the difference between, what is Region Six, which is Region Five, is what I would ask them. And so I guess that, I don't know if that answers your question or if I asked something more specific?
And then I have a second question about your homes in Omaha. According to the municipal code in Omaha, couched on small living facility, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me right now, but small living facilities disabled, large living facilities disabled. And I'm wondering if you meet each of those codes? And if so, how many of your homes in Omaha are in each category, please?
Yes. So all of our houses in Omaha, so seven plus the apartments are each called, are designated as small group living disabled. And that allows for eight individuals plus a live-in manager. And that was the city's way of fast-tracking all sober living houses that are in Omaha. And there's probably over 80 or 100. And so there, so each one of our houses are eight plus, plus the one.
And in all of your houses, regardless of where they are, can you describe the hours in which your resident house manager works? Because if they are a witness, if they're there to be watchful, I'd like to know at what point in the day are they watchful, or night?
Yes, so we're not, there's no requirement in the city of Omaha for what that definition is, or what a house manager is. It depends on the individual. We have some individuals who are disabled to substance abuse and have a physical disability. So they're there all the time, you know, 24 hours a day. They don't work, which is one of the reasons why they become a house manager. But then there's other individuals that do work, and we encourage them to work because it's a good role model. And so I would say in Omaha, I guess, Julie could probably say, which which houses have, which individuals have which type of disability, one or both, but I would say it's probably 90% that they, that they work. And some of our houses, so, I guess I wanted to clarify what Julie said, so, there's certain houses that she manages, and I have another manager that manages other houses. So, we implemented a model in Omaha to where we have houses that have probation and parole and those kind of things, and then people, we found that in Omaha, it seems like it's a little bit different than Lincoln, but they have more difficulty in finding places after they leave us. So, what we, we made a secondary model to where they have their own room, but there's no house manager. We don't provide food, we don't provide hygiene or laundry. It's basically, they have the disability, and they have their own room, and they pay rent, and we still don't discriminate against on the record, your disability, those kind of things. So, there's way less of a cost with those houses, unlike the houses here. Houses here need lots of supervision because of the type of, type of individuals that are in that house. So, we, we have, you know, we've been doing this for a while, so we just see how best way are to help the individuals.
So, if the houses here in Lincoln need a lot more supervision, how many hours a day is a house manager present and working?
So, they have their, I mean, from five to, I mean, at least from five to nighttime hours, weekends, and, you know, they've got the sleeping hours, and then we have, like I said, Julie comes by herself four times a week. We have two other case managers, they're here three to four times a week. So, you might have the same case manager there, or two different case managers are in the same day, might be three hours at a time, two hours at a time. I mean, you could have potentially three people plus a house manager in one house in one day, at different times of the day.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, yes, Councilman Bowers?
Okay, so, just to be clear, do you collect verification that there's a substance abuse disorder for your folks?
We-
Besides self-reporting?
We, if they ever come from, to us from probation, parole, it's a requirement. They know, they know that rule, so, they know that rule, and then we also have, yeah, self-reporting.
So, outside of self-reporting, if a person comes to you, do you collect verification for all of your folks that they have a substance abuse disorder?
No.
Do you collect verification that family living would be a therapeutic benefit?
Who'd we get the information from?
Like, I mean, for folks that are coming to your place, we've already established that you don't collect verification that there's a substance abuse disorder. In addition to that, though, do you collect verification that they would, that your folks, that if we assume that they have a substance abuse disorder, if we assume that they do, that, do you collect verification that family living would provide a therapeutic benefit from some sort of healthcare provider?
For each individual?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you don't mind, if I could just ask you to just clarify, so, I guess in the sense it sounds as if you're asking is if, do we collect verification from each individual that they need the sober communal living?
That it would be therapeutically beneficial to them?
For them, for that individual, no.
Okay, so, we don't collect that there's verification of substance abuse disorder, we don't collect verification that family living would be a therapeutic benefit. Is it your belief that every person living with a substance, a substance abuse disorder would benefit from a family living environment?
It's our benefit, well, I guess the position would be that those who are seeking out this communal family living environment would benefit from it. They're willing to participate in the process. So, and I guess I would just want to correct that, it's not that we don't have any verification that there's no benefit to communal sober living. We do believe that we have verification that there's a benefit to communal sober living, not on a case-by-case basis, though. That is, our position is if they're coming to want to work with us in a communal sober living environment, that they would meet the one requirement that, that we think would screen them out, and that's an unwillingness to participate in the process.
So, it sounds like that your belief, though, is that every person who is seeking out a family living environment with a substance abuse disorder would benefit from a family living environment?
Correct.
So, you're essentially saying that an individual, whereas with some of the other accommodations, like an emotional support animal, a person can't just bring in an animal and say, I believe that I need my dog or cat here, they need to have some sort of verification. You're saying that with substance abuse disorder, a person seeking that therapeutic benefit should be entitled to that therapeutic benefit?
Yes, in, in the sense that, from where we're coming from there, is that it has been shown, studies have shown that there is an increase in success rates with that communal sober living. Is it going to work for everybody? We don't know. That's kind of up to them. But what we're looking at is the larger scope there, that this tends to have a better success rate. So, if someone's willing to participate with our program, to see if they can enjoy this better success rate, then we're willing to work with them in that.
I think, you know, I think that's very interesting, because I would say that every person seeking a specific therapeutic benefit from their healthcare provider does not automatically receive it, because it is on a case-by-case basis, and it sounds like that that therapeutic benefit is not being verified on a case-by-case basis, and saying that it works for, it's been proven that this therapeutic benefit works, so we're going to say that it then should apply to everyone that seeks it.
Well, I guess I think the problem with that is, I, and I think if that's kind of the threshold that you're one, that you're maybe wanting to hypothicate there, the, the problem with that would be, when are we ever going to know that that's a success for that individual? In that, I mean, if it's, I, I don't know that there's, and again, I'm not the medical professional, I'm not sure, but I don't believe that you're really going to get anything from the medical community that's going to, I don't know how one would figure out that someone is, that's going to benefit them without trying it.
I mean, like with an emotional support animal, right? Like we established earlier, they go see a therapist, they get a qualified diagnosis, and then they get a therapist that says, this person needs an emotional support animal, and it seems like that we're skipping over part of that process.
That, well, in that sense, to me, I guess I would come from the perspective, it seems more like gatekeeping, in the sense that now, before this person can get out of jail and come into our home, they have to go check in with the doctor first. And that's where it thinks it almost creates an unnecessary hurdle. Let them come in, let them try this process out, and if, if their medical professionals advise otherwise, sure, they can take whatever alternative approach, approaches exist out there in the universe. But we're trying to keep the doors open to, ultimately, again, we're trying to strike this, help out this underserved population.
I guess by that line of thinking, and this will be the last question, because I, I'll stop doing a back and forth and talking in circles, you know, kind of by that line of thinking, that seems almost equivalent to, we should mandate every landlord except an animal that a person wants to claim is an emotional support animal, without any sort of verification, because we need to let them try it.
Well, I can kind of understand that analogy you're making, but I think it inappropriately shifts the burden there, because then what you're doing is you're obligating all landlords to accept this issue, right? And that, I think, is kind of a whole different nature than looking at whether cities can make reasonable accommodations to their zoning code. Case, you know, the justice system has looked at this, and it has kind of created this path already, and it is talked about by establishing the prima facie basis that we have, is sufficient enough for you to find in our favor.
And I'll just add that, like, I have, you know, I've had tenants too, and I've had tenants want, that have a service stop, and if you go home tonight, hop on the internet, you can get a certificate that says, for 20 bucks, you can get, that you can get a service animal, but-
Therapists get in trouble with their licensing boards for doing that inappropriately.
Well, I'm not talking about therapists, I'm talking about, this is, and I've actually talked to HUD, and they said, no, you have to, you have to accept that. In this instance, we have to get a drug eval from a licensed alcohol or drug counselor. It takes, I don't know if you're aware, right now it's like 48 weeks, and it costs $260. I think that's an undue burden on that individual when they're trying, when they don't even have a job, they don't have the resources.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just give us a moment. While they're conferring, I, I did, I wanted to talk about, in the beginning, this evening, Mr. Carrato, you said that food was provided, hygiene products were provided, but then we heard later that actually in Lincoln, the food was provided by the food bank. So, talk to us about, because I think we were under the impression you, there were hot meals, but, but what's, tell us the difference between what you said and what actually was happening.
I'm not sure, we never talk about hot meals, or, I never talk about food bank, but, but just to answer your question, so, we provide, we make sure the house has full fridge, full pantry, all the basics, all the staple items. We don't, we don't cook for them, like hot meals, like you said, but, you know, that would be additional cost, you know, cook and chef and all that. So, we just provide full fridge, full food. So, do we also supplement with, like, food pantries? Yes, yes, we do. But do we also provide food? Definitely, because food pantries, you probably haven't been to one recently, we go to them every week, multiple times a week, they're out with certain foods all the time. Milk, egg shortage right now, meat, ground beef, bacon, kind of perishables, those are hard to find. Now, you can, you can go to pantries and find, you know, noodles, pretty simple, you know, those, those stay on the shelf for years, but-
That's part of their $750 per month is food pantry?
Yes.
Okay. I have some more, but I want to check in with my colleagues, Councilwoman Washington.
I don't, I don't think I have any questions, but I appreciate your last question, because now I'm looking at the budget they provided, and I'm just trying to put them together.
I guess my last comment, if there's no other questions, and, and you can respond. Oh, wait, I have to surprise, I guess when I go last, then you get the last, but, so, Mr. Carrato, you did state, now we're back on the documentation of the substance abuse to Councilman Bowers' point, when you take new residents, and now we know that they're not always documented, because Mr. Bowers found that out. But earlier tonight, you said, it's either that or self-identification, self-reporting, or there are ways you can find out. And I said a few minutes ago, that, that made me really feel uncomfortable, so, what is, what does that mean? There are ways you can find out?
I'm not sure why you mentioned that you feel uncomfortable. What I meant by that was, you know, when someone self-reports, you know, that they have an addiction, there are certain things that we ask, you know, are they, have they had a drug eval? You know, typically, they've had a drug eval. Have they been in any meetings? Because you'd also do those in jail if you, if you're obligated to do those. If, we also have access to their records, and if nothing on their record shows any type of, like, substance abuse in terms of related to their crime, then that leads to that question. So, and then also, their officers, although they can't say, because they tell us, protected by HIPAA, they, they would say, oh, no, because we tell them, they have to have a substance abuse history. Oh, no, they're okay. I can tell you that.
So, it's, it's a trust thing? It's not, just trust me on this? It's not validated? So, we don't really know?
Self-reporting.
Okay, okay. I do have one more thing, but Councilwoman Washington, I recognize you.
You know, I, I don't know that I have any more questions. I certainly have comments. For many reasons, I feel like we're, we're left, I'm left, I won't say we, I am left unclear of the therapeutic value. I understand that there is a therapeutic value to communal sober living for some individuals. But I don't feel like you've told us what you have found in your experience with 12 individuals being the number necessary to provide therapeutic value. And, you know, we're at a place where we have an empty house right now, which is almost like a fresh start, were it not for the fact that you operated outside of the law for eight months. And so, I think we're in a good place that the house is now vacant again, excepting for the fact that there are people who really require a structured sober living facility to help them. And I see it as a real need. But I'm having a very hard time grappling with the situation we have at hand, and whether or not, you know, grappling with the situation at hand. Since we went through these this summer, I have asked for assistance in researching how to put common sense, sane, reasonable expectations on this issue, and you've been approached for your feedback. I'm talking to neighborhood associations, and I've, I don't want to lengthen this process out, you know, for another, I don't know, months and months. I think that there is a lot of anxiety about this, but I also am having a very hard time grappling with your desire to get approval soon, when we have so many questions, and frankly, some proof left. And I think those are all my comments for now. It's, we still have more items on our agenda, and we still have to grapple with this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else have comments at this point? I guess, I do, I do, I was going to say, basically what Councilwoman Washington did, I know when we get to the vote, others may have more to say, but, you know, the whole therapeutic benefit thing, like Councilwoman Washington and maybe others, I can't get there yet, and you have, for me, you know, I want you to succeed, but when you tell us that you believe there is, and if we don't believe you, delay it, and you'll bring us examples, that doesn't work for me. We have an empty home, and so clearly it didn't work this time. 12 people were moved on by our state system of parole, and, and you can't tell us why. And they're not returning your calls, and that gives me more pause. And it's my job, outside of the three criteria, it is my job to worry at night, and besides you, guess what? I'm going to wake up in the morning and go home and still be thinking about this. So, you may think it's just the two of you, I got to tell you, and I'm not the only one on this council that gives us a lot of thought and worry. Not only, we want you to succeed, we want this to be a model that can succeed. We are hearing from neighbors, we want them to be happy, we want it to be fair, they have brought us some truth and some evidence. We're not trying to make it harder, we're trying to make it better, and like Councilwoman Washington and others have said, I just, I can't get there, I can't get there. I don't think we have the evidence, and, and when I, when I think about $750 for the, for individuals, and then, I love the food bank and our food pantries, but that doesn't, that doesn't work for me either. And so, there's just a lot of missing parts for me. So, that being said, I do know, it's, it's, the hour is late for everyone that's been so patient with us and with you. So, with that, there's not any other council comments, we can move on, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Madam Clerk, can you help us move on?
Calling item 5B, approving the letter agreement between the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Firefighters Association, amending the 2021-23 collective bargaining agreement regarding the current automated staffing program.
Deontsey Christie, City Attorney, 555-South 10th. Don't think anyone's left. This is-
This is automated system for the staffing with the LFR, Firefighters Department. They are using it now, but actually not using, using it at its full potential. The leadership in the union, they've already agreed to this, they've already agreed to use this system, but they need to amend their agreement, and it needs, they need to memorialize it. So that's what this is. I think you may have heard a little bit about this system at one of the Mayor's Awards of Excellence, talked about getting that going. I see that someone remembers that, so.
Captain.
I'd be happy to try to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for our City Attorney on this issue?
I, I don't.
Thank you.
But I did, I read through the agreement, and I want to, I want to thank everyone who sat down to, to work this one out. I think it's a really important system, and if it can work better and be more efficient, it's going to be better for our firefighters.
I think that is the goal, work better and be more efficient. Yep, thank you.
Let's do this.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Item 5B. Anyone else? All right. Saying done, please move us on. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we can now vote on these items. Item 5A, miscellaneous 22014, application of MCK development for reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act in Section 1.28 of the Lincoln Municipal Code, to allow up to 12 unrelated persons to reside together as a family on property generally located at 2648 Washington Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Suarez. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Washington.
I don't need to speak long here, I've already said what I really need to say, but I will ask, I will add one more thing, that my vote in opposition to this proposal does not mean that I am not committed to finding a way to make these work, and I would welcome the input of the providers, of the houses, the owners of the houses, and the neighborhoods, the neighborhood associations, and I'd like to work this out, but not tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Beckus.
Yes, through the last couple of weeks and then tonight's testimony, I, I do find that the residents are disabled. I do not believe that there is an undue financial or administrative burden to the city, and I'm not exactly convinced that there's a fundamental altercation or alter, altering of the zoning code, especially when we talk about, you know, we have people, more than three unrelated people, living in places all over this town. However, I'm not exactly sure that any therapeutic value has been demonstrated. I don't think that's probably a very high threshold to meet, however, and I think that, as Councilwoman Washington stated, there are workable solutions here, because at the end of the day, I think the majority of the qualifiers have been met, excepting, in my opinion, therapeutic value. But I think that that's actually a relatively achievable hurdle to meet. So I look forward to continued conversation as to the parameters of how systems like this may work in our community.
Thank you. Councilman Bowers.
Thank you, Chair. You know, in this case, the council is supposed to act as a fact-finder, and the fact to find is if this provides a therapeutic benefit. And just to rehash some of the comments that I said earlier about folks being removed from their housing, setting folks up to essentially break the law, and or, and not following through a process to apply for reasonable accommodation, talking about is it an actual benefit? You know, there's no verification, there's substance abuse disorder, there's no verification that family living would be a therapeutic benefit and not a therapeutic risk. I don't know if I would necessarily agree that every person living with substance abuse disorder would benefit from family living, and because of that, I, in addition to what, you know, the conversation that was had earlier, I would say that that fact was not found.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Shoeb.
I have a question for legal before we vote.
Okay, okay. Do, would you like, we can have Mr. Christie come up?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
I was gonna say, yeah, I don't think there's another legal here. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. You know my question already?
No.
Okay, so.
I wish I did.
Yes. So, this one before planning the zoning, the planning department made a recommendation, you know where I'm going there, right? So we have an appeal of a decision from the planning department.
Uh-uh.
No.
Planning Commission.
No.
It's on the application.
Yeah, have me out here.
I understand what your question is, I think it is not one of those situations. This is a yes or no.
Planning Commission was a recommendation.
Yes, correct. And that's another way of, thank you, of saying what I'm trying to say, it's simply a recommendation to this body, and this body votes yea or nay.
And could you take that further for clarification?
Yes, would mean that the reasonable accommodation is granted. No means that the reasonable accommodation is denied.
Thank you. You have same question?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Anything else for you? Councilman Shoeb, are you?
I'm no.
Councilman Suarez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to state that how difficult these situations are, how difficult the decisions are, thank to everyone who come out to just provide information, and it's just really, really hard. We want people to be successful in every sense of the word in the community, throughout the community, and I appreciate all the work that the council has done and is doing to really find appropriate resolutions, so that our, everyone can live safely and appropriately and freely. I do believe that we've not gotten evidence that this is therapeutically necessary, so I just, that's where I'm at right now.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman. Yeah, I don't have much else to say, except I do support what the Planning Commission has forwarded to us as well, which is pretty unusual, and I want to support that, and, well, it is, isn't it? Seven zero, I meant that respectfully. And I, I do too, want us to get there and appreciate all the work of everybody that, and everyone that stayed to this hour, the neighborhood associations, you've done a great amount of work, thanks for your due diligence, and the neighbors that are here, as well as our applicants, and people that didn't live in the neighborhood, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so, Mr. Brown, thank you for sticking it out. So with that, if there's no any, any further discussion, without further ado, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shoeb, excuse me, Shoeb.
No.
Suarez.
No.
Bowers.
No.
Washington.
No.
Beckus.
No.
Ward.
No.
Motion lost, six-zero.
All right, we can move on.
Item five, or 5B, approving the letter agreement between the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Firefighters Association, amending the 2021-23 collective bargaining agreement regarding the current automated staffing program, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Any further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero.
How did you get Ward out of that?
I don't know. Long day.
That concludes Section 5. We'll move on to Section 6, Public Hearing Ordnances, Second Reading, and Related Resolutions. Item 6A is amending ordinance number 21376, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for Gold Tower redevelopment project, and the amount not to exceed $4,200,000 by changing the maximum period of dividing taxes pledged for repayment of the bond for 15 years to 20 years, as stated in the corresponding redevelopment agreement.
Good evening.
It's almost morning.
Mike Rogers with Gilmore and Bell Bond Council of the City, 2120 South 72nd Street in Omaha, Nebraska. This is to correct an error in the ordinance that accompanied the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement approved a 20-year tax increment financing period, which is possible under state law now with an extreme blight designation, which has occurred for this project, and so this is to correct the ordinance, to make it clear that 20-year financing is, is possible under the bond ordinance, to conform with the redevelopment agreement.
Thank you, and thank you for your forbearance. Any questions for Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Rogers, go home.
Yeah, saying none. Thank you, and Madam Clerk, please move us on.
Is there anyone here to testify on item 6A?
Seeing none. Thank you for catching that, Madam Clerk.
That concludes Section 6 of our public hearing ordinances, second reading, related resolutions. Move on to Section 7. Item 7A, change of zone 22039, application of IMS Properties LLC to change from R2 Residential District to I1 Industrial District to H3 Highway Commercial District, planned unit development and property generally located at 1100 Southwest 6th Street, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion?
I think, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think that this proposal makes a lot of sense, and I look forward to supporting it and the continued expansion of IMS at this location.
Agreed. It's a great project within today's news. That's right. Any further discussion? Anything else? All right. Saying none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Beckus.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item 7B is approving the first amendment to the conservation easement between the City and IMS Properties LLC to adjust the boundaries of the easement area on the property generally located at 1100 Southwest 6th Street, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to respond to some of the comments from the public hearing last week. I know there were just a folk, a couple of folks who spoke in opposition, and they were very concerned that this easement was not going to suffice for the project, and that, that this was not a good idea, because of the location of the easement and of the project so close to the floodplain or in the flood.
That would be eerie.
And I just wanted to say that this is one of our allowed uses, and I know that we just went through a long, drawn-out conversation about floodplain regulations, and they were not to stop all development, they were to provide the safeguards necessary, and this project has provided safeguards in the past and will continue to provide safeguards as they expand this project, and for that reason, I support this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments? All right. Saying none, please call the vote.
Beckus.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Shoeb.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. Section 8 is resolutions, first readings, are items 8A through 8H. Section 9 is ordinances, first reading, and related resolutions, are items 9A through 9F. Section 10 of our agenda is our pending list, items 10A through 10C.
Tonight is public comment evening, so anyone present that would like to speak to the council may come forward at this time. You have five minutes to speak to an issue not on tonight's agenda or on a future agenda. Now, Rosina? Yeah, you're in good company.
If you've taught me well, this will come out. And Rosina Palini, 1850 Dakota, can I just bring this to your attention? Because sometimes the developments that we see on paper look so very different than we, when we actually see them being built. So, and sadly, these are all in poor neighborhoods. This one is 29th and Y, and I'm not sure what regulations, oops, let me, we followed with this particular development. That's the corner of whatever and Holdridge, Y, excuse me, Y. So, that's the whole block, excuse me. There is the west side of the block, right up against that house. Not sure what planning codes we followed with this. Here's another one. That one's at 14th and, right across from McPhee School. What is my point? I'm wondering what Wilderness Crossing is going to look like when they build it, and how close it's going to be to the creek. I mean, because these were plans on paper that looked good, and we approved them, and this is what's being built out. No green space for children or families, right up against the sidewalk. So I'm just presenting this, and forgive me, I'm going to continue to do so. I love to ride my bicycle in neighborhoods, I'm going to show you a fun one, because it is really frickin' late, and we all need to go to bed so we can go to work tomorrow. There is a rockin' house over there, solar panels, I mean, hydroponic garden, a block away, but anyhow. I, I will present these to you, because I don't know that when the Planning Commission, or even when you folks see these on paper, and we have developers proposing these items, what does it really look like, and who has to live there? So I preface a question for next week. Do we know how much our children's children, and our children's children's children, will be paying for all of the TIF projects? I think next week is three TIF projects on the council hearing? I might be wrong, but they're coming up, right? But do we have a number? Do we know what our children's children will be paying? Or the next generation? And are we going to use TIF like I drink water? I think it's a really important question. I don't know if we regulate it enough. Why do I get concerned? Because we've got somebody that comes in from out of state, they're a developer, they're going to make a ripping amount of money, and then they leave. But what do they leave us with? And I think that's a really important question right now. But thank you and good night.
Thank you, Rosina. Thank you very much. Next testifier, Mr. Cole, is back.
Dean Cole, 2644 Washington Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I just wanted to make this fast here. This, the issues that we talked tonight aren't going to go away, it's going to be a big fish issue for the city, and I want to volunteer myself as a advisory person, help any way, because I've learned a lot as a citizen and in working with these folks, and so I just wanted to pass it on. Again, I appreciate your, all your hard decisions that you have to make, and all the hard work, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. We appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Anyone else? Mr. Bratz. Thanks for your patience.
No worries. And for the record, I'm dressed in a finer suit today, because I'm going to talk about a finer topic. If you give me a moment, I'll fill this out for you. And I also would ask, I know it's late, but seeing as how I have had that patience, maybe I'll have a little patience, maybe if I run past, maybe about 45 seconds or so. Okay? Cool?
Yes, cool.
Elliot, would you stand, please? Good evening, going into, we're still a good evening.
Yes.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lou Bratz, I live at 5020 South 56th Street. I could claim a lot of organizations I've worked with, but quite frankly, I am a kind of a hell-raising humanitarian, I go where I'm called, and that is not my own words, that's the words of Mother Jones. Look it up, you'll find an interesting story. I am here tonight for a few things, and the first thing I would like to say is, I would like to say thank you to Councilman Washington. I am here tonight for a few things. And the first thing I would like to say is I would like to say thank you to Councilman Washington, excuse me, Councilwoman Washington. Councilwoman Washington, as you all know, has been in contact with my son and agreed to have my son shadow the Councilwoman in her job today. And that is where she has brought my boy into work with all of y'all. So I have a question. I know this is kind of rhetorical because you guys don't like answering questions of us people, but I am gonna ask anyways. Have any of you learned anything from my son today? I'll only ask that rhetorically and I'll, you guys could just keep that in your head, but I'll tell you I have. I learn from my son every day. What I've learned is patience, empathy, a renewed sense of right and wrong. I have learned what it means to look at things and how our decisions right now as the adults in the room affect their futures. And that's because of my children, including my son, who has been with you all this afternoon. My boy, who's grown up in a time of great change in this country and world, but understands that there is a difference between being woke and being awake. He knows this difference because he's been taught that. And I quote from MLK, "One of the great liabilities of history is that all too many people fall, fail to remain awake through great periods of social change. Every society has its protectors of status quo and its fraternities of the indifferent who are notorious for sleeping through revolutions. Today, our very survival depends on our ability to stay awake, to adjust to new ideas, and to remain vigilant and to face the challenge of change." These words ring so true for him and many others because their very survival right now in this city and in this state depends on their ability to stay awake and unfortunately vigilant during these times. This young man knows, like many in his generation, that many leaders have been asleep during this time of revolution. It's not surprising to him. In his continued pursuit of change, his challenging of the status quo, his struggles with his fellow comrades to move our world towards a more just world is commendable. His work teaches me. With that said, I wanted to remind him, and excuse me, but I know I'm not supposed to address people out there, but that's my boy. I want to remind him to remain steadfast and committed. Commit yourself to the noble struggle for human rights. You will make a greater person of yourself, a greater nation of your country, and find a world for us all to live in. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all for your time. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you so much. And thank you for being here today. And thank you, Councilwoman Washington, for hosting. We're really glad you stayed as well.
I feel it's past your bedtime.
Way past. But you're with that, so. Anyone else present that would like?
It's not really past.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Anyone else present that would like to testify to the council? Anyone else? All right.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any further discussion? Wanna stay a little longer? All right, I didn't think so. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Suarez.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
We are adjourned.